Pastor Bill Carney and then Supervisor Goodman will lead us in the pledge. So if you'll all stand.
God, thank you for the gift of today. Keep us healthy and safe. Guide all that we do and let your blessing remain with us throughout the entire day. And Heavenly Father, it is your will that we live together in harmony and peace. Defeat the plans of all who would stir up violence and strife. Destroy the weapons of those who delight in war and bloodshed. And according to your will, end all conflicts in this world. Stretch forth your almighty arm to strengthen and protect those who serve in our armed forces. Support them and keep them from all evil, giving them courage and loyalty as they serve and protect us. And dear Lord, bless and protect our police, sheriffs, firefighters, and all first responders as they serve us, especially as they put themselves in dangerous situations. And last but not least, Almighty God, we give thanks that through the different gifts of the members of this board, you provide for the ongoing care of Pinal County. Lord, cause these supervisors to recognize and act on every opportunity for successful service and send your spirit upon them all that everything they think, say, and do may be for the common good of all people and to the glory of your name. In Jesus, we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. So I want to take privileges of the chair to move something a little bit out of order. We have a letter that was sent to county manager Leo, and I'm going to ask him to read that letter from the state trust land people.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members, and public. This letter is dated August 3rd yesterday, 2021, and it's from the Arizona State Land Department. Dear Leo, the Arizona State Land Department appreciates the continued opportunity to work with you, the Board of Supervisors, and the talented team that represents the interests of Pinal County residents. This year has been a record year of interest in state trust land for major economic development projects. The Arizona State Land Department manages 9.2 million acres of state trust land, and in that effort, we must prioritize resources related to proactive entitlements. During the 2021 Pinal County Major Comprehensive Plan Amendment cycle, the department filed an application PZ-PA-006-21 related to approximately 12,000 acres of state trust land east of Gold Canyon where State Route 24 will eventually connect to the US 60. This is an area where we see major growth potential as we enter this next decade. At this time, however, we have elected to withdraw Comprehensive Plan Amendment application to focus resources on other key areas of our state in furtherance of our constitutional mandate to maximize revenues to the trust 13 beneficiaries. We look forward to continuing our work with you, your team, and the Board of Supervisors on projects mutually beneficial to the county and to the beneficiaries we serve. Sincerely, Lisa A. Atkins, Commissioner, Arizona State Land Department.
Thank you, Mr. Lou. And I don't know if there was anybody here that wanted to speak to that potential Comprehensive Plan Amendment, but I wanted to get that letter out to let everybody know that it has been withdrawn at this point in time. So, thank you. First item is call to the public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Pinal County Board of Supervisors may appear in person or submit in writing comments which shall be submitted to the clerk of the board by closed business hours of 5:00 PM day prior. Comments shall be no more than 250 words, and actions taken will result of public comment will be limited to the directing staff and study the matter and reschedule the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date. So at this point in time, I want to go with the fact that she might not have anybody that has anything yet. I want to ask the clerk if she has a...
Chairman, thank you, Chairman. The clerk of the board office has not received any call to the public via email. However, Chairman, we do have individuals over in the overflow room that would like to speak during call to the public.
Okay, well, I'm going to start with this room first, okay? So is there anybody here that would like to address the Board of Supervisors at this time? Come forth. Mr. McCain.
As you wanted. Morning, Chairman Miller.
Morning.
Board of Supervisors. My name's Perry McCain from Arizona City, and it's my pleasure to be here. Recently, I came back from Washington, DC. I was a freedom rider that went across country fighting the filibuster because I felt that it stops due process and democracy. The first freedom riders we had in 1961 to 1964, they brought us the Civil Rights Act in 1964 and the Voting Rights Act in 1965. Very, very pertinent then as it is today. But the one thing that struck me most going across the United States was about three gentlemen, they went missing in Mississippi, and they were unarmed so that you can have a voting right. They died. That was in June 22nd, 1964. That was probably the most profound thing. We had four buses. Out of the four buses, there was only preachers and myself that I know of that's got diversified training and culture because I was on the Kitty Hawk when they had a race riot. But right now, we have a political gridlock that's going to stop our democracy. So we need people talking with each other, not at each other. I firmly believe, in my opinion, that the framers of the Constitution, they wrote the First Amendment not because they wanted to flatter the people in power, but for them to protect the voices of those who want to stop status quo, and I'm very thankful for that as well. But somebody once wrote, "Woe to the nation whose literature is disturbed by the intervention of power because it's the closing down of the heart of a nation." God bless us all.
Thank you. Anyone else in this room that would like to speak, call to the public. Seeing none? Do you want to... Oh, we do have someone. Okay.
I must say something.
I don't see it. Put it in the basket. Give us kind of your name and a general location in which you reside, and you have three minutes.
Sure. I'm Sam. I reside in AJ. I was here about a year ago, and I didn't get taken real seriously. Could be because I sound crazy, and it could be because I lost my temper. I will be more respectful this time. I don't know the level of understanding of political affairs and what's going on, so I'm going to try to be as basic as I can. Yesterday in Alberta, the government failed to prove the existence of COVID. That's kind of a big deal because if you can't prove a virus exists, how can you test for it? How can you make a vaccine for it? I don't want to talk about the virus. I don't want to talk about COVID. I want to talk about liberty and the Constitution. That's what I wanted to talk about last time. You're carrying it up. All employees of the state of Arizona and elected officials have to swear the oath to defend the Constitution, and I have a little couple pieces of it here. Let's see. If I go over it a little bit, please humor me. I have a... I'm trying to make some pretty pertinent points here, and I'm being as polite as I can. Where does it begin? "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Do ordain and establish this Constitution of the United States." Well, since I've been here last, my First Amendment got violated with freedom of speech. When you get kicked off of the biggest platform in the world, your speech is violated. I got kicked off of all three. When you have to social distance, is that not the polar opposite of assembly? Like, do you know what the definition of these words are? The freedom of religion is really hard to enforce when your church is closed at the direction of a state agency. I could continue. There's also, there's a few more amendments. There's the Fourth Amendment. Like, when is my privacy stopped and your expectation began? Like, okay, great. So switching gears, there's a guy, he's an important guy. His name's James Madison, and he said that... I have two little quotes from him. "The accumulation of all powers, legislative, executive, and judiciary, in the same hands, whether of one, a few, or many, and whether hereditary, self-appointed, or elective, may justly be pronounced the very definition of tyranny." The bad guys don't even have to work knowingly, okay? What they need is us to stop defending the fabric of our liberties, our God-given rights. We have to uphold these. We don't sit and let them uphold themselves. I'm not a scholar.
Your three minutes are up, but I'll let you conclude if you can come up with a little bit of a conclusion there.
Okay. Here it is. Thank you. Thank you for being so polite. "There are more instances of abridgement of the freedom of the people by gradual and silent encroaches of those in power than by violent and sudden usurpation." My rights are going away, guys. What do you want me to do? I've contacted my board supervisor, my mayor, my state representative, my state senator. I've contacted my sheriff's office. I've reached out. This is my second time here. Who's standing up for my rights? I have a flag in my yard. I'm a veteran. I'm standing up. I don't want to give you guys a black eye, okay? But it's time for a different kind of government leader. It's time for a different kind of politician. If the Republican Party has failed and the Democratic Party has failed, then you're both on the other side of the populist party. Help us out, guys. If I'm a moron, great, but maybe we could work together and start, I don't know, upholding our Christian values? Weren't we founded on Christian values? There's an abortion clinic in this county. Come on, it's time to push back, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You have somebody in the overflow room?
Chairman, the gentleman that just spoke, Sam, is the one that came over from the overflow room to speak during call to the public.
Okay. Is there anyone else? I'll leave it open for a minute. Okay, seeing none. Move us on to item number two. Recognition of Employees Exemplified Pinal County's Core Culture Values. Mr. Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to catch the new board members up and for some of the public, back about five years ago, Natasha, are you able to bring up on the screen the graphic? So maybe it was, well, it was probably about four and a half years ago now. We made a movement to establish a culture for the employees, and this was a little bit less, a little bit different than the Board of Supervisor's Strategic Plan, which is, tends to be more of a business plan. This was more of a cultural development so that our employees would have a framework of how do we act, how do we think? And by coincidence, the values that we embraced and developed together created the acronym ACT. So that's why you see there at the top, the Act of Our Culture. And so we co-created this together. Our why, why we exist is to enrich lives beyond expectation. The how we do that is we find success through, we find successful solutions through flexibility, integrity, and innovation. And then what we call our non-negotiables were values that we wanted to hold true to. Accountability, taking responsibility for our actions. Commitment, all-in, going above and beyond expectations, which represents the level of customer service we expect and want to live up to. And then teamwork, coordinated group working together toward a common goal beyond our own personal ambitions. And so in the development of this process, we got a lot of feedback from staff in the county, and one of the areas that they identified for us to improve in is recognition. And so we created a program to recognize when department, staff, employees are exemplifying these values. We kicked it off, if you remember, with the video on the facilities and custodial department who had been keeping us all safe through hygiene in our facilities. And so now we have one more, and we'll be coming probably once a month to recognize great exemplary actions and award those employees who are a part of that.
He could probably give us the narrative if you... We need some sound. What's going on here, Matt? Want to step up to the mic?
We've got the help desk on the line. Relax.
You want to wait, or you want to circle back and move forward, circle back?
Pardon me? Come back to it? Okay. We'll come back to it.
Sure. So did you want to move on to the county manager's report in the meantime, Chairman?
Yes, thank you.
Half of that report is another video, so we'll have to...
It's a good one. Hold off on the videos for a little bit here.
It'll be worth the wait. The other portion is it's our interim finance director, Randy Stinson. It's her birthday today, so happy birthday, shout out to her. She's been fantastic. She's helped to compile and do a really good job on our financial statements for our housing authority, and so now she's doing the same thing centrally in finance, so. Happy birthday, Randy. And the other half of the manager's report is a sound needed, so I think we can move on to the next agenda item.
Okay. So we'll go to, we'll go ahead and go to item number five, the purchasing division and let...
Number four.
Number four, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. The announcement, oh, this is Kavanaugh. Okay. Okay, Supervisor Kavanaugh, you've got an appointment and a reappointment that you'd like to present.
Sure thing, and we also have another, David Garcia. I don't think he's on this list, but he's here.
We're going to do him on the E.
On the E, okay.
Okay?
Okay.
We'll come back to him.
All right. So we have Pamela Rabago, and Pamela is a Realtor and Superior. She has served on the Citizens Advisory Committee since 2010, and we'll be reappointing Pamela. We have Richard Prienoo. It'll be his first time on the Citizens Advisory Commission. He's a civil engineer who has worked on designing neighborhood plaits and house plans as well as substations and transmission lines for power companies. And Richard has a family and lives on a small ranch near Oracle, Arizona. And Panos Paramithis, this is his first time on the commission. He's a resident of Cactus Forest, and he has managed multi-million dollar projects for Palo Verde and Nuclear Power. So if any of these folks are here...
Are they here?
Present? Yes.
Come forth.
Yeah, we'll get, you know, I want to personally thank you people for taking the time to set on these commissions and these boards for the county. They're appreciated, and we love to have the public input on all these different organizations. And we've got a couple more coming up, so, but thank you for your time. There he is. We even give you a certificate to make official.
Working on audio? So now that brings us to item number five there. Ms. McBride, you're up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Shawna McBride, and I'm your purchasing manager here for Pinal County. And today I have your purchasing division report for August 4th, 2021. So first up today, the board has requested to approve the following new contract awards. San Manuel and Dudleyville Community Parks Improvement Projects. We recommend Pima Paving, Inc. be awarded the contract as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder at a cost of $653,019.97 for the base bids, Alternate 1, Alternate 2, and Alternate 4. This contract will be used by the Open Space and Trails Department. Next, the board is requested to approve the following contract amendment. We recommend approval of amendment number two to exercise the optional extension through August 20th, 2022 with the following suppliers for aggregates, lorry, and Portland cement: Cal Portland, Gila Rock Products, Vulcan Materials, Cemix Construction Materials South, MDI Rock, and Hanson Aggregates. This contract is used by the Public Works Department. Next, we have some cooperative purchases that are over $250,000 that we're requesting the board approve today. Requisition 161-958 in the amount of $1,692,970 to Floyd, I'm sorry, for Voyager Fleet Systems for fuel requested by Fleet and PCSO. Requisition 162-385 in the amount of $642,557.50 to Midway Chevrolet for 10 2022 Chevy Tahoe PPVs. And this is requested by Fleet and PCSO. Requisition 162-009 in the amount of $276,000 to High Tech Network and Security Solutions. This is for consulting services requested by Information Technology. Requisition 162-395 in the amount of $556,128.85 to High Tech Network and Security Solutions, and this is an upgrade for switches and data domain requested by Information Technology. Requisition 162-398 in the amount of $259,786.66 for O'Reilly Chevrolet for seven 2021 Chevy Silverado 1500 work trucks, and this is requested by Fleet and Public Works. Requisition 162-384 in the amount of $615,379.05 for Midway Chevrolet, and this is for 11 2022 Chevy Tahos CIBs PPVs. And this is requested by Fleet and PCSO. And last, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases that were made with a value of between $100,000 and $250,000. Purchase order 245-546 in the amount of $180,000 to Waxy Sanitary Supply, and this is for custodial and laundry supplies requested by PCSO. Purchase order 245-554 in the amount of $115,270.75 for Motorola Solutions for APX radios. This is requested by Information Technology. Purchase order 245-404 in the amount of $114,777, sorry, $707.37 to High Tech Network and Security Solutions. This is for our Cisco Smart Net Renewal, and this is requested by Information Technology. Purchase order 245-443 in the amount of $125,000 to Diamondback Police Supply Company, Inc. for ballistic vests requested by PCSO. Purchase order 245-451 in the amount of $144,059.85 to Axon Enterprise for tasers requested by PCSO. Purchase order 245-607 in the amount of $135,464.48 to Midway Chevrolet for two 2022 Chevy Tahos PPV units, K-9 units, requested by Fleet and PCSO. Purchase order 245-280 in the amount of $215,000 to CRM of America, and this is for waste tires, requested by Public Works. Purchase order 245-521 in the amount of $208,400 to Baker &amp; Taylor Books, and this is for books and materials for our libraries, requested by Library District. And purchase order 245-487 in the amount of $110,000 to Ingram Library Services. This is again for books and materials requested by our libraries for Library District. Purchase order 245-562 in the amount of $136,189.56 to Santan Ford for two 21 Ford F-150 police responders. Those are four-by-fours, and that was requested by the Fleet Department and PCSO. And that's our purchasing division report for August 4th, 2021.
Very good. Any questions or comments at this time for Ms. McBride? Seeing none, boy's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing division report dated August 4th, 2021.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I've just been informed to get the videos and the sound to work and sync up with everything. We're going to shut down the system, so we're going to take a five-minute recess for them to...
to shut down and reboot the system and see what happens. You good with that?
Yep.
I hope so.
First step in troubleshooting is reboot. Turn it off and turn it on.
Yeah. So are we adjourned? Five minutes. Oh, excuse me. Item number three, I believe, or two. Leo, you want to start?
Sure, yeah, well, it was segued right into the video was the plan.
Okay.
Our canines typically work interstate 10 in that corridor for smuggling, for criminal interdiction. They're very sophisticated these days, so they'll have hydraulic compartments, they'll have hidden compartments. We can't obviously remove a gas tank on the side of the road. We're going to have to get it back somewhere, and we're going to have to have somebody who knows what they're doing because our guys are cops, they're not mechanics.
One of the PCSO deputies called. They had a vehicle they apprehended that they needed some help dropping a fuel tank in. We obviously have the lifts and the tooling capable to help them out with that.
Disassembled it, took the gas tank out, and ultimately located 64 pounds, just over 64 pounds of heroin and just over 18 pounds of the fake oxy or M30 pills, fentanyl pills.
We have our table we use for all of our guys to take a break on, to eat lunch, is your standard folding table. It was lined from corner to corner, side to side. That entire table was stacked with bags, and it was, it was a sight to see.
Huge, because I mean, you're talking 64 pounds of heroin, which is a lot of heroin. I mean, and that's going to be distributed throughout the United States. And then the fentanyl pills, we have almost daily overdoses now, and it's typically the fentanyl pills that are causing these overdoses. So literally, you know, it sounds a little over dramatic, but literally Fleet helped us save lives by getting this off the street because had this hit the street, inevitably there would be overdoses associated with this load of drugs.
It's definitely a privilege. All the guys in here, they work really hard. They, they get all the credit for everything that we do in the shop. They, it's prideful to be a part of something that, that has a little more meaning than just changing oil and doing the routine maintenance on a car. So when they came to the guys here to, to help them on an investigation, they were, everybody in here was just ecstatic. They were excited, and they were proud to help, and they took a lot of pride in it with, with helping those guys do that.
Over the years, the sheriff's office has come to rely on our expertise to keep their critical vehicles and deputies on the road, and so they feel comfortable asking for the unusual from us, and we feel comfortable responding to those unusual needs. This was very much one of those unusual needs.
I can't say enough how much we love those guys. I mean, our lives are really in their hands, if you think about it. They're the ones fixing our cars, making sure our cars run, keeping us on the road.
The relationship between PCSO and Fleet has been tremendous. We work with them, obviously they take care of everybody on the road, so our job is to keep them on the road.
And Mr. Chairman, we just wanted to give a token of appreciation to the team, the Fleet team members who actually worked on the vehicles on this project. If we could have Brandon, Marcus, and Jeremy come up, we just want to give them a little token of appreciation and thank them for their exemplifying the values of commitment and teamwork, even though it's, Sheriff's Office is a... Even though the Sheriff's Office is a separate constitutional office, it's, we're still the same team.
We going to do a picture with these guys?
We'll go on.
Yeah. I want to ask Jeremy something.
Just a little bit, there you go. And just look right here in three, two, one more, three, two.
What's that? Jeremy, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Was your grandfather Jim?
It is.
He's the guy that kept my fleet running when I owned a trust manufacturing plant. He had that little gas station out there on the old Tucson Highway. Fantastic guy.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. I'm glad to see a generation or two sticking around, too. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, since the sound's running, we could move on to the second half of the county manager's report.
There we go.
So we've started a series of get to know your supervisors, and so we have video clips about their background, who they are, and help all the staff and the public get to know their supervisors better, especially since we have three new ones. And the first one that we were able to develop is for Supervisor Jeff Surdi, District 5. It's a great piece, bio piece.
Reload. I'm going to blush.
I'm Jeff Surdi. I'm Pinnell County Supervisor for District 5, which takes in Apache Junction, Gold Canyon, Peralta, and up against the Gold Mountains and the northern part of Santan Valley. I was born and grew up in what we'd call Appalachia, southeastern Ohio, and everybody says, well, what, what city are you from there? And I'm not from a city. Well, what town? I'm not from a town. People just live, you know, every, the homesteaders, every 160 or every 80 acres, and so you had to drive like 10 minutes to get to a little town. People just lived out rural, and it was strip mine coal area. You were either a coal miner, or you worked in the gas and oil industry, which is what I went into. I worked for a local gas company, which led me to get a job in production of the wells that were drilled in oil and gas. But I spent a lot of years in my truck by myself, just listening to the radio, and, which is probably where I got my political start, is by monitoring the news and monitoring talk radio. And like a lot of people, you're born as a Democrat until you realize that really I wasn't a Democrat. When, you know, Jimmy Carter was in there, and why is interest 15%? And why are we doing this? Why are they taking our hostages? Why don't we do something about it? And then Ronald Reagan came along, and, oh, that's the way it's supposed to be done, and everything, you just had, you felt good about yourself, and I realized I wasn't a Democrat, I was a Republican. I was very fast when I peaked. I don't even tell people, but I could actually run a 4.240. I grew up hunting and trapping, and actually came out here to trap in the 1980s. Every job I've ever had, I've had to produce. I had to produce my wells. I had to produce well trapping. You had to get the deliveries done and sell, and same way with, I'm now a retailer now. And if, unless you sell every day, you don't make any money. You know, I sell firearms. I had a gun shop privately owned, competing against the Walmarts and the Bass Pros, but the mom and pop shops can, can do well if you do it right. But I had some police officers from the City of Apache Junction come to me. You won't believe what we just had to do. We packed up 2,500 firearms, drove them to a smelter in Miami and melted them. I said, why? He said, well, that's, was a decision that was made, and I thought, what a waste, and the city council wasn't even aware of this? So I kind of became a whistleblower, and I said, hey, do you realize that you just did this? And, I mean, that was enough money that if those were sold in an auction, and what these were, is they were guns that had been seized over like a 20-year period, and they were just in storage. So yes, something needed to be done. And then one other issue, when the, the city council turned down a hotel, because that's, and I'm still trying to get hotels and resorts out here, and so I came and I spoke about, you know, we, the need for hotels and tourism, and people started saying, well, Mr. Surdi, you need to run for city council. And I said, I can't do that, because I was very bashful. I mean, 20, 20 years ago, I couldn't have even sat, sat and talked like I do now. And so I ran, and I won, and I haven't, I lost an election since. I think I won like six or seven, but I got elected to council again. I really had no intention of being mayor, and the previous mayor was, he was an okay guy, but you just saw things that weren't being done. And I said, why don't we do this? Why don't we go for that? So I ran for mayor, and I think I changed the culture and the perception of Apache Junction, making the mayor's office reachable and changing the reputation of Apache Junction by beautification and tourism-type projects, and I think I made a difference. So then after being mayor, I promised only to run for two terms, I believe in term limits. It's kind of the same way with the supervisor. I mean, my predecessor was doing a, a good job, but I just saw a different direction we could go. Why aren't we doing this? Why isn't this office reachable? And I am trying to raise the communication level. A lot of folks don't even know that this office is here. I've already had an open house where we invited people to come see that we do have an office here in the Apache Junction area. So we're at the county complex right here, which is basically superstition in Idaho. Everybody knows this complex as being where motor vehicles is. Over there is a very important one because that's where you would get permits and also pay your taxes over at Building 800. But my office is right here, and you'll see it right there on the board. The Justice of the Peace Office is there. Adult Probation is here. So if you need to come see myself or my staff, you'd come right in here, the front door's around there. So this is basically where we are. A lot of people don't realize they have an office here. They think the office is only in Florence, but we're very reachable, very accessible right here in Apache Junction and Gold Canyon. And perhaps we can't solve your problem with the county, but we can direct you on, on where to go. I'm trying to up the game in District 5. That's another thing that frustrated me was all these cool things happening in the county, but it's all Coolidge and Casa Grande. Okay, what about us? What about District 5? We've got so much to offer out here. Why aren't we talking about tourism? Where are the jobs out here? Because a lot of these folks, I had to do it myself. I had to drive all the way to Phoenix to work in food, food distribution. Roads, especially District 5, we're behind the curve on roads. To go to the eastern part of my district, everything goes out Highway 60. I am working on a plan to get a surface street punched through out there. That's a must. The same way to go to the south, to go to Santan Valley, everything goes down Ironwood. So you got two major roads, and it's not enough. We need more access roads. We need them widened. The 24 is happening right now. It's, if you go down Ironwood, you can see where the 24 is tying in. So that's going to relieve Santan Valley a lot, but we need the, the north-south interconnect, which was approved by voters years ago, and it got tied up in litigation. We really need that to happen. That's going to relieve this whole area. I hope that in a few years of me being here, that people are going to think differently about District 5.
Good job, team. Supervisor Surdi, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
Not really. I look forward to seeing all of you guys.
Okay.
See who I'm working with up here.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay, moving on. I see that we're on item 6. Do you agree with me, Natasha?
Yes, Chairman, that is correct. We're on item number 6, Consent.
As we've jumped around here. Consent items, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the board, unless a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. And I know you gave me a third one. We have two that we're pulling right away, which is E and G, and...
T.
And T, and T is being removed?
T is being continued to August the 25th, and then AR is being removed from the agenda.
And AR is being removed from the agenda entirely. Anybody else? County Manager or Mr. Kavanaugh?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull items E, I, L, AP, and AQ. E, I, L...
Okay, well, we already had E.
I'm sorry, E is already pulled, so I, L, AP, AQ.
I, L, P?
AP.
AP.
AQ.
Mr. Chair. Yeah?
I just had a question on P and Z. I'm sure it's a typo, but...
P and Z.
Just to make sure.
Okay. Anybody got all this written down on scorecards? They can get this straight.
What were the other ones?
I, L, AP, P, Z. I'm not, I'm not going in any order other than just how I heard them. T is continued. AR is removed entirely.
Let's go back and look at them again.
Okay.
So first one is E.
E?
E.
Correct.
I.
Correct.
L.
Correct.
T.
Correct.
T.
Correct.
Z.
Z, correct.
I think that's where you lost, oh, and AR.
AR is removed. AP was the other one, Kevin?
AP and AQ.
AP and AQ?
Yes.
Okay. So in the motion, do we need to make that remove?
Just remove them, and then we'll take them one at a time after we go through them.
Okay, that's, okay, all right.
Okay, good.
So I think we're ready to go.
Okay. Board's pleasure? One second. Was there anybody from the audience that wanted anything removed? Good, all right, we're ready to go.
So, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent items A through...
BB.
What is it?
BB.
BB minus E, G, I, L, P, T, Z, AP, AQ, AR. That's it.
That's everything. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it, thank you. So we're going to start with item E, and I did request that, and so did Supervisor Kavanaugh. Kevin, you want to go first? Do you have a reap pointment?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. We have a reap pointment of David Garcia, who is present today of San Manuel. He has served previously on the Transportation Committee, has done a fantastic job. We have an appointment of Mark Seidel to the Transportation Advisory Committee. His, he is a resident of Florence, from my district.
Okay, and then I am reappointing Mr. Riggs, Rusty Riggs, to the, I believe, Transportation, and then a reap pointment of Ted Hawkins to that department, but I know Mr. Riggs is in the audience, so if he will come forward and, and, did you say David was here?
Yes, David Garcia is here.
Okay. Come forth, and we're going to give you a certificate.
Chairman, if we can make the...
Chairman, if we can make the motion and take the vote.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm going to hit myself.
And then also, if we can have Supervisor McClure announce his reappointment as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's do the vote. Let's do the vote first. Or you want to do your...
How would you like me to, would you like me to say my AP?
Yes, Supervisor McClure, if you can state your reappointment for the record before the vote.
Thank you. My, my reappointment is of Ted Hawkins from Maricopa for the Transportation Advisory Committee. He's been on before, and he's a great asset to the county.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for item E?
I move we approve item E.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Okay. That month off didn't do me any good. No, I was asleep, everybody. No, I didn't see Ted here yet.
Rusty, come forth.
Come forth.
Come forth. Come forth. I said we need to get a sword so we can... Come. Come, did it?
Three, two, one. One more. Two. Very nice. And... Two, one. Here we go. Okay. Thank you, and thank you, gentlemen, for taking these appointments. I know that you're all, everybody has busy schedules, and we do appreciate the time and effort that you put into these boards and commissions. Okay, I believe that brings us to item G. Mr. Keller had asked that we remove. And do you want to just explain why you wanted it removed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd ask, did you remove this item? Because it does require unanimous consent from the board. And I just wanted to create a clean, a clean record for the clerk's office of the board's vote.
You want it at roll call?
No, I think we're fine.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion on item G? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion that we approve item G as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. It's unanimous. Okay. Brings us to I. Item number I. So... Mr. Kavanaugh, you, you requested this to be removed?
So this is, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. It's a discussion of the intergovernmental agreement between the Seven Ranches, DBWID, and Pinal County Elections Department. And we had a couple of questions about the election to be held. And I don't, is anyone from the Elections Department here, Ms. Cooper?
Hi.
Thank you. Just before we go into our next election, we had some question about the last one, and we discussed some addressing errors or some returns that were somewhat unusual in either the time-space that we received them or the number that we received or the percentage that we received. So I wondered if those sort of errors were corrected and we're ready to go for this next election.
Okay, so I'm Stephanie Cooper, the interim elections director. That's actually something that's done through the recorder's office. And there were actually no issues. It was just a misunderstanding, so...
I'm so sorry. I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. You'll have to forgive me. I'm getting over a cold. There were no issues with it. It was just a little bit of a variance in the numbers, which...
A variance in the...
The numbers of the votes. But I am going to defer to the recorder's office on that because it's not a process that the elections overseas.
Okay. Is the, is the county recorder here? So... So it's a concern?
It's not, under my opinion, it's not a concern. It's not something any different that's happened in previous elections.
Could you explain specifically what it is that occurred that, that was brought to our attention? That just may be a blip, something that we should make sure we clear up? We talked about an addressing issue. So what specifically was the issue?
There wasn't an issue. It was just how the numbers came back. It was more of a faster process this time than in previous elections.
So the, so there wasn't a higher number of rejected ballots this time than any other election?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman. Okay.
Then this is, this is a, this is an intergovernmental agreement that we're doing with a special district so that they'll have a ballot or on an election cycle.
Right, so it's...
That's really what we're, that's really what we're doing here. It's just approving this intergovernmental agreement that Pinal County's Elections Department will handle this election for them. Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to elaborate on that, this is one of our standard IGAs that we will enter into with all special districts or cities and towns that may ask us to perform the election for them. It actually has the rate that they are charged and so forth and, and how they are going to go ahead and structure, whether it's an all mail, whether it's not, and so forth. So, yeah, this is one of our normal IGAs that we will be, you will see much more of these coming up as we get ready for the election cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. That's a little more... You're clearer in that description of what this is really about, what we're voting on here today. It's simply an agreement with the special district to hold an election. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number I as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Thanks.
L? L? IgA between Animal Control... Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
This is an IgA between Pinal County Animal Services and the Town of Superior for contracting services, helping out with the, the complaints that the Town of Superior has in collecting stray animals and so on. And so I want to compliment Mayor Mila of Superior and reaching out to us and to help, she's helping her citizens by, by contracting with Pinal County. And it's a good working relationship, and I'm glad that the Town of Superior and Animal Control worked this out.
Okay, good, yeah. Well, thank you for pointing that out. We're always happy to interact and help out with our communities, our surrounding communities. Thank you. Do I have a motion on item L?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item L as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. So I think that brings us to P?
P, yeah. P and Z are pretty much the same. And I think, I think this is a area where cut and paste is not your friend.
Okay.
Because I see that it's a grant program, the amount of $9,000 for San Manuel Airport to use on personnel? I think that's probably personnel. I mean, I like you a lot, Mr. Betty. But, you know, just checking to make sure that we're not approving something here. You know, personal and then cleaning or debt service. I, I assume that this is a typo where the A should be an E. Is that correct?
Yes. Chairman, members of the board, Supervisor McClure, that is correct. That's a typo.
Okay.
It's for personnel, wages and stuff, cleaning, disinfecting of the airport or any type of debt service, which we don't have right now.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't approving, like, new leather jacket and shoes, you know, maybe a car, you know?
Flight jackets.
Flight, you know, you never know. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can we do P, can we do P and Z as one?
As amended? We need to just kind of point out the...
I would prefer that we just take them each separately.
Yeah.
Because you've pulled them separately.
Yeah.
I pulled P and Z together. I didn't... If you go back.
All right. So...
So I would move that we approve item P with the correction from personnel to personnel. Is that acceptable?
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. And Z was the same?
Z is, Z is the same thing.
Okay. Do you want to, any motion on that?
So I move that we approve item Z with the amendment that personal becomes personnel.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Brings us to... T. And T is going to be continued. Does that understand? So, so what was the date? The 20...
25th, August the 25th, the next board meeting.
25? Do I have a motion to continue item T to August 25th?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we continue item number T to August 25th.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Okay, brings us to AP. AP. Mr. Kavanaugh, or Supervisor Kavanaugh, I believe you...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item AP is a discussion approval of a drug, gang, and violent crime control grant agreement in the amount of $141,000 plus a $35,000 match from the county. And Chief, could you sort of describe what this grant will do for Pinal County?
Yes. Chairman, Supervisors, Matt Thomas, Chief Deputy, Pinal County Sheriff's Office, Supervisor Kavanaugh, this is essentially like the Get 'Em Grant. You guys are familiar with that one. That's... So these monies are used to specifically target and go after gang members, drug cases, and help prosecute those, help with overtime, help with equipment to fight those specific crimes.
Okay. And as you and I have discussed, there's some issues in my district. And so will some of this money be allocated for resources in District 1?
Yes, it's used for the entire county. So as we communicate, as, as you as supervisors communicate with the elected sheriff and let us know your issues, this money can be used because it can supplement. So when we don't have the deputies that may be up in the copper corridor and you say, hey, Sheriff's Office, I need some help with this problem, and it qualifies under this grant, then yes, we can use that to help supplement and get people up there to fight those problems.
Thank you. And I have constituents asking for details on this very issue, so, and for more deputies. So we appreciate the deputies we have. We have some issues, and I would, I'd be honored if you folks would assign some folks to help that out.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I answer your question? Do I have a motion for item number AP?
I move that we approve item number AP as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. That brings us to Q. AQ. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item AQ is a grant that will provide money for juvenile redirection program, overtime, hoofbeats, equine therapy sessions, and outside speakers in the amount of $104,000. And my question for the chief is, it says outside speakers. Could you explain who those outside speakers and what they accomplish?
Yes. So Chairman, Supervisors, again, Matt Thomas from Pinal County Sheriff's Office, Supervisor Kavanaugh, it's an overall program. So really what this was, this grant asked for, when we applied for it, it was looking for innovative programs. Specifically, we were trying to target juveniles because we know that's where we have to focus for the future. So the redirection program, being the sheriff's program that focuses on juveniles, and it tries to catch them before they enter into the system. So if parents are having problems with juveniles, if juveniles have committed certain crimes, this redirection program that the sheriff created allows us to kind of intercede prior to them going into the justice system so that they don't get involved in that and lets us kind of redirect them, right, and, and back onto a good path. So we proposed that program for this grant, and that's how we received it. And so the equine therapy is part of that, so the kids work with that. So as we get these kids in, some of them are from troubled homes. Some of them just made bad decisions. As we try to redirect them, we get them involved in community projects, the equine therapy. And so the outside speakers would be speakers that we paid to be brought in to speak specifically to these groups of kids. Now, those speakers, we didn't identify a list of here's who we're going to use. We just put in for the chunk of money for the overall program and wanted the ability to, because some of these speakers, i.e. a Cardinals player, may charge a fee to come in. But if we can bring that type of person in to talk to these juveniles that's come from that kind of past and now is successful and show them the way out, that's what this is designed for.
How long has the juvenile redirection program been in place?
It's been in place for about three years, I want to say, ish.
Have you had speakers come in in the past?
Typically speaking, as it works now, we have, yes, to answer your question. But typically what we're doing is we're bringing in PCSO personnel. And every once in a while, we'll reach out to County Attorney Volker. We'll bring in attorneys. We'll bring in some victim advocates. And, and, you know, through the sheriff's connections, he'll bring in some people that maybe the kids look up to, you know, social media influencers, whatever the kids kind of vibe to. So yes, in the past, and hopefully in the future, we'll be able to ramp that up a little.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Supervisor Goodman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I've actually sat in on a couple, three of their sessions that they've had. And as I actually was asked to be one of the speakers talking about career path. And so experiencing firsthand what that particular program does for our youth and some of the troubled issues that are out there. Very much in favor of this program and what the sheriff has done and along with the attorney's office, what Kent's done. And so totally in favor of this, and I know what it does. And then speaking from experience, being a part of something like this in the equestrian site. My father is a Justice of the Peace. Many of you know, started a program in the Apache Junction area with some of the troubled kids. And, and several 300 or 400 families were affected by that program. So I, I have firsthand experience what that can do for families. So, so in favor of this completely.
Very good. Thank you for those comments. Okay, it's board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve item AQ as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. I think that got us through. We got AR is, and AR is removed. Does, did we include that in our motion when we did the consent agenda? Okay, so we've already removed it. All right. Get to this. So I'm going to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting at this point. And we're going to open up the flood control district board meeting. So we have consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. And I have a request to remove item C. Is that for discussion, or is it just being removed entirely?
The public would like to speak to item C, Chairman.
Public would like to speak to it, okay. So do I have a motion for items A and B?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items A and B as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Well, second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. I just have it. C, is there somebody going to present, or does somebody just want to speak on this? Go ahead, come forth, if you don't, normally we have somebody present, but let me, let's hear what you have to say.
Okay, I'm one of the residents along that area that's proposed for that. And one of the things we're seeing is not enough is being done, and we're just basically pushing the problem down the road. But one of the things that I was seeing, the need for, the need we have for this is because of Little Dylan here. The first year I was living there, Little Dylan, the water ran that was diverted over to our area. And this in the summertime, as we know, and we see that, we've been seeing it on the news for months, that it attracts people to that water, attracts these kids. And this Little Dylan drowned and washed up on my property my very first year, a couple of months after I got there. So this is something I've been living with and watching for years with this, not to mention how many other kids that I've watched play in that and become at risk by that water that's doing that. I mean, they're, we're just asking too much from these kids and having to supervise these kids along our own properties to make sure they don't get out of our way. We don't even have pools, some of us don't have pools. No need to be watching our kids around water, but when the water flows like that, and it does it periodically, doesn't warn us, we don't get no warning of it. It just comes, we just look out, there it is. So now we have our kids washing down the properties, and this, this little boy here would be twelve years old today if we wouldn't have failed him back in the, ten years ago. And to this day and after ten years, we're still failing our children by not taking care of this flood, not taking care of these waters, and we've, we've just lost several in this past several weeks. Not necessarily in our properties, but we see that around this, this whole Arizona. We have this flood problem throughout the, throughout the state. But we're not in a remote area. A lot of these people are in remote areas when this happens. We're not, we're in our properties, we're in our homes.
Okay, I'm sorry, your name?
I'm sorry, my name's Nelson DePrado, I live at eighteen oh seven West Adobe Dam Road.
Nelson, and then, so I, and I don't know if we have anybody here to present, but while I, as I'm looking at this agenda item, this is to authorize the county to go in and look at some mitigation, a way to try and control and channelize and
Yes.
and possibly, and so, I just want to understand, are you in favor of us going in and trying to fix it?
I'm in favor of us going in and doing that, but we need, what I'm not, what I'm seeing from, not from the county and our floodplain people, that we are not taking care of the problems that are going on down there. We're just, we're diverting it from one person to another, we're pushing it downstream is basically what we're doing. And if we're going to do something about this, we need to take care of the water, period. Not just move it from one place to another, and that's what happened to us. Why we have the problem now is because another area was our water retention, and that got filled in by authorizing somebody to come in and develop that area that pushed the water to us. Now it's our problem. And if you guys just continue what I see on the project or what has been proposed, that it only goes so far down our road, it doesn't continue, and this water runs all the way to Hunt Highway, which is a couple of miles away. So it's not just our problem, it's, it's a problem that's going on down the.
Okay, well, your comments are heard and on record, and we'll, we'll pass this on to the flood district people and see if it can be addressed, you know.
I'm available.
In a more, in a more comprehensive way that, that will solve the issues.
Thank you.
Supervisor Goodman?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I've actually met with the individuals, some of them that are here present. And then Chris was also a part of that meeting, so there, I would like to further some discussions in regards to this, as far as the dollar amount that we're going to be spending. And so I would like to expand that into a discussion as we move forward on this.
Well, I think we have to stick to the agenda item here. We're passing a resolution authorizing the design and construction of a flood mitigation project.
What, if I might, could I, Mr. Chair, could I have Chris come up and do a presentation or talk to the problem?
Yeah, oh, there he is. I was going to say, if he's here, he is here.
I am here, Chris Watermaker, county engineer and floodplain administrator. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Yes, so this project, as you can see there, we've got several individuals who would be affected by this project, they're here. This project's been many years in the making, but as you heard, there's some concerns from some of the residents about how effective this project may be at solving the flood problem. So we went back to our consulting engineer who came up with this concept, and we discussed some additional options to improve the project beyond what is being presented here. And they also told us the cost of the project would have to be increased from the seven hundred and fifty thousand that's being asked for in this resolution up to one million two hundred thousand. So I don't know if it's possible to pass this resolution with that change. If not, we can bring it back at the next board meeting with updating the figures and the dollar amount.
I think that might be a little more difficult than it sounds. Mr. Keller, how could we approach this?
Mr. Chairman, you can always go ahead and make an amendment to the motion. If you get the, the vote supporting that increased dollar amount, that would become part of the motion. The question that I would have though for Mr. Watermaker was, this is going to be entering into a contract for the design and construction, so I would want to make sure that the, the contract language would be expansive enough, so.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, I'm wondering if we, because we don't have specifics of what the cost will actually be.
Yeah, so the other option, I think is probably the more viable option, is we could always come back with a change order at some point in time and go ahead and increase that dollar value. But this would get the contract as it is currently off and running at least.
Okay, okay. You know, because I think we, we would want, we would want itemized, you know, exactly what they're going to do in the, for the expand, in the change order or in the, in the rest of the work for your office, so we're more, so we have it in writing as to what the, the dollar amount will be spent for. So, and I, you know, I got to believe that you'll bring this back to us with a change order.
Yeah, I can certainly do that.
But when we get more information about exactly what the scope of work will be.
Right.
Okay. So. Go ahead, Supervisor Goodman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, like many of our areas, in the rural areas, especially up in the foothills, there, this is where a lot of these are happening.
Okay.
And there's a lot more building that's being constructed up in that area, which is creating more of a problem. Anytime you put a rooftop over a piece of property, and you don't handle any of the waters that come on top of that piece, on top of that building, they're going to go, the natural course is to go where the water's going to take it. And so over the years, that entire area has created more flooding issues for a lot of the residents that have been there for some time, and it's going to continue to worsen. So that's where we probably ought to really look at this a little bit more in depth.
Okay, well, and I know that we have ordinances that, that require retention and what have you, so. Mr. Keller, did you have some, a suggestion here?
Yes, I did, and I actually had a follow-up question for Mr. Watermaker, just to make sure. Was the, the contractor off of our on-call list, or would we have to go back out? I'm just trying to figure out what might be the easiest way to, to increase, you know, the cost, the contract and so forth if need be.
Yes, Chairman, Chris Keller. We will be using an on-call consultant to do the design, and we are working on that scope of work right now. It's being actually amended as we speak to account for the additional improvements that we want to make in the area. And the remainder of the cost that you see in the resolution is actually for construction, and that's based on the consulting engineer's opinion of.
Estimates.
Yeah, cost estimate for future construction that we've determined so far.
And I think my last question, would there be a timing issue of going ahead and getting the revisions done and bringing it back on the twenty-fifth, or would, would that, you know, hamper, you know, getting started now?
It would just delay us two weeks before we could actually get started on the design phase.
I just wanted to bring that out to, you know, to the board. So it's more of a timing issue as to whether you want to, you know, bring it back in two weeks, you know, with a full, enlarged scope, shall we say? Or you want to come back, you know, with, you know, an amendment change order to increase that scope? So you could go either way on that, I believe, and I tend to lean that way myself, but, and I do have, I have other people within the audience that would like to speak to this item. It's not a call to the public, but I feel that it's important that we hear from residents in this area, and so I'm going to allow it. Is anybody else like to speak to this item?
My name is Cheryl Karliczek, I live at fifteen seventy-three West Adobe Dam Road. I built my home there in two thousand. We had some flooding, but not much. A little background, county allowed permits and a developer to build on a dry lake where the wash would go. The builder, or the developer, I guess, had to, the water comes in and it has to go out the same way. Well, he put the wash going straight down Adobe Dam Road. So it literally floods the road, we cannot get out. If we had a fire or emergency medical, emergency medical couldn't get to us. The, the little boy that did pass away, we had a neighbor call. Another neighbor who had an ATV picked the boy up, brought him to the paramedics, because the paramedics could not get to him due to the flooding. There's more permits being permitted out there, homes are being built, washes are being moved, and now it's coming towards us. I have video of, of the wash. I want to thank Supervisor Goodman for coming and listening. We have been contacting the county and talking to the county for over ten years on this matter. And they keep telling us, well, we're hiring an engineer, we're going to work on it. Well, here we go, we're ten years, and it's getting worse. We have more homes being built, more washes being moved. I'm not sure if flooding doesn't contact whoever gives the permits to build these homes, and they're not paying attention of, and they're submitting permits, and it has to stop. We all pay property taxes, our money is, is going to other counties, Florence, Coolidge, and we're not seeing anything. All we're getting is more flooding, more issues, and we're asking for help. We're willing even to let the county take over the road. It costs us money after the rains, it costs us money to clean it up. I mean, this last flood, we had somebody's patio table coming down our road. I mean, we just, you know, it has to end, and we, we're asking for help. We've got washes coming from the back of us now, the front of us. Lynette will hear, she's got four washes going, landing in her property. So something needs to be done.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Please come forth, give us your name, location, we are putting it to three minutes.
My name is Roger George, I live on Adobe Dam Road. Part of the problem that I see is, the problem that I have is with the process. It seems to me that you guys spend more money on committees and engineers than it would actually take to fix the problem immediately. If it rains today, none of us can get home, none of us. So what we need right now, instead of more studies and more resolutions, is we need an immediate fix. The money that I'm looking at up there can already create an immediate fix. You have a road that the county owns part of, which is Pamela. The immediate fix would be to take the water from where it's running, from where you guys allowed those people to fill in the retention pond, and send it down Pamela, instead of sending it down our street. That to me is the bigger problem. So we're talking about coming back in two weeks, again, if we have flooding today, it's a problem. You know, I don't understand why it takes so much money to have these engineers come up with plans that don't work. The plan that, the plan that was presented to us isn't going to work. The plan that was presented is going to send more water to Lynette's house, and eventually it's going to wash her house away, because I've seen water go to her front door, and it's going to come towards my house. I'm kind of lucky, because I'm kind of on a hill. But the bottom line is, once it rains and once it floods, nobody gets in, nobody gets out. So we need to, we need an immediate fix. We don't have that kind of time. And with the funding you guys are talking about, I mean, you can fix this, at least a temporary fix, immediately. There's no reason you can't. And it's just going on entirely too long, and you're talking about a neighborhood that doesn't have that kind of time. I mean, we just can't afford it. My question is, how many more kids, how many more people have to die and drown before somebody does something about it? I, I just don't get it. You know, you have dollar amounts that's there, let's use it. I mean, it's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
So I'm probably the reason why you got requested for additional funding. The options that were presented fixes the first half of the street. I'm at the end. You saw, all my plumbing lines are all exposed now, so I kind of objected to that option that was presented to us. Kind of makes it worse towards the end. So I'm Lynette Longoni, I reside at Adobe Dam Road. And in the interest of the three minutes time allotment, I kind of wrote down my thoughts and concerns, and I should finish with half a minute to spare. I'm here to plead, plead the board the sense of urgency regarding the washes in our area. When I first moved here, I experienced the first monsoon and wash running in the area. I'm from the East Coast, so we don't have washes. I was like, what's a wash? I came home, I wasn't able to get to my child. There was a river running down my street. I'm like, hmm, how do I get to my kid? Police Department, Fire Department weren't able to access either, and I can plead to you that I'm sure you understand how scary that was, not to get to your child. I bought the house knowing there was a wash there, and the washes do get filled, but the natural flow's been altered with all the development that's been happening in our area. I ended up having to cut through the back of Judd to get to my house, which a few neighbors over there were not happy about, but sorry, I'm going to get to my child. The second and most recent rains that we have was worse before. I now have three washes on my property, all my plumbing lines are exposed. Last Friday, I had an Amazon vehicle get stuck on my driveway and had to be towed out. Yesterday, my air conditioning unit died, and I have no way to allow van access to my house to fix it yet because I haven't had all the washes addressed. I can't get any assistance for it because apparently it's on my property and it's a private road. I understand the wash has always been there, however, the development and all the activity in the area has definitely altered the natural flow. We have little kids on our street, and God forbid, any of us need medic or fire assistance. On top of that, I also have a few asks from you. If this does get approved, can we memorialize this in writing what the county is willing to do to rectify this whole situation back there? Can we stop the developments? Or where will we sit on your future schedules regarding priorities and timelines? My second ask, can we ask the Community Development Department to, to work with flood control to help get additional funding to fix this area? We have all these developers that are actually filling in washes and altering the natural flow. Aren't they responsible as well? For example, we had Benanza Ranch. Silverdale and Pamela has four brand-new homes being constructed. There's filling happening every day in those washes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Board's pleasure, what are you going to do with this, guys?
Mr. Chair, I would like to move forward with what we have, but also with the contingency or the, that we look at expanding the broadening, broadening the, the amount of. or the, that we look at expanding the broadening, broadening the amount of, the scope of work. Yeah. With the timeframe.
Okay, just trying to figure out how we might want to word that into this. This is a resolution authorizing the design and construction of a flood mitigation project, Bonanza Ranch in San Tan. And then we would add in an amendment or amend it to include future.
Supervisor Chairman, I would suggest that you then also direct staff to bring back at the next meeting or at a future meeting, a possible amendment to this item, expanding the scope of work in the area.
Okay. Can you do that?
Yeah.
You got that?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments at this time? Mr. Chairman?
Just say one thing. The scope of the work right now, if that's going to commence the board with a...
Ma'am, ma'am, wait, wait, wait. If you're going to speak, you'll need to come to the podium. I'll allow you to come to the podium, real quick.
My apologies. I would just like to add that with the scope of the work that's presented today, that can't happen. It totally destroys my property. So if there is a contract in place...
The design, have you, I mean, are you an engineer?
They shared with us, yes.
Oh, you're, oh, you're...
Yeah, they shared the design with us.
They did.
That's how I noticed that it stopped a house before mine.
But we're going to amend it.
Yes. If you, that's what I'm asking. Are you for sure?
We're going to include that in this, in this motion.
Okay.
That it be amended and that it's looked at in more detail and further down the line. So Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be wise to understand the scope of the project and break it out between design. I think that was your preference and the amount of the project. Because the design, of course, we have vendors that are already on contract and so we understand what their costs per hour and so on are going to be. And I think that should be separated from the total cost then of the bid project, right?
Yeah, if we're going to use on-call, I guess we have unit costs that we've already determined that... But the design is separate. It might be an on-call engineer doing the design for us as well. I'm just trying to think how to separate these two. And maybe we should go forward with the design to have a better idea. Thank you, Kevin.
Chairman Miller, Supervisors Kevin Costello with the County Attorney's Office. You know, this item, the resolution, just authorizes the overall project. And it's, the $750,000 at this point is just an estimate. Actual contract that sets out the scope of work, both for the design and the construction of the project, would come back to the board at a later date. So at this point, the $750,000 is an estimate. It's not an actual approved expenditure. This just authorizes the department to move forward, develop the agreements, and put the plan together to get the project started.
Well, we want to get it started, for sure. Okay. Does everybody understand that concept, where we're at with this project? There's more to come. And I want to assure everybody in that area that this is just to allow us to get moving on the project and there'll be more actions taken by the board in the future on this project. Everybody good? Good? You good?
I'm good. I mean, I agree with the gentleman that spoke earlier that said that this has been a long time in the process. And that's oftentimes been in this position. That's what's frustrating to me, is it does take a while. But you also need to consider and know the facts that that is a private road. And so for the county to legally go in and do anything, those, you have to relinquish those rightaways to the county. And that all depends on you as neighbors being able to pull that off and make that quicker. The sooner you get that done and we approve this and everything moves forward, then we can get in there and do the work. So I just want to make that very clear.
Let's get the project on the books and then we can...
Yeah, amen, amen.
Can I come up and address that, please?
No, I think we're done. Discussion, we need to move along. We've got, we want this project to move forward, so we need to authorize some expenditures. That's how that, that's, you know, that's how we operate. We have to, as a board, agree to spend money on a project, so we're, they're there. There will be more actions on this project in the future and opportunity for more discussion.
So with that, I'm good. Let's go.
Okay.
It's rock and roll. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 080421-FL21-001, authorizing the design and construction of a flood mitigation project at Bonanza Ranch in San Tan Valley, including expenditures of funds estimated at this point to be $750,000 for the design and construction of this process. With the caveat, or with that at a later date, stat, given direction to staff within the next August 25th, coming forth with some amendments that we can add to the resolution.
You good with that, Counselor? Okay. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. We will get the ball rolling on your project, everybody, so. I'm adjourning the flood district meeting and moving to the public health. Open to the public health meeting. And... Where am I at here? Oh, consent items, okay. Public health. I'll let these people exit first. All right. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member or the county manager or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. I believe we have A through D. On the consent, anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I believe it's item D.
D?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So we're moving item D. Do I have a motion on, county manager, public, anybody else? Want anything pulled? Not seeing any. Do I have a motion, A through C?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consenting, consent items A through D minus D.
I, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Item D. Tasha? Your question, Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll catch up here. So this is a...
What a mess.
Heavy phone. This is an agenda item to approve a grant application submission to, for the amount of $6,000, $6,236,578 for enhanced detection response surveillance and prevention of COVID, including funding mobile units and hiring, I think, six people. And so could you give a broad description, first of all, Dr. Spears, of this project?
Sure. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, Supervisors, Tasha Spears, Public Health. This particular project is specific to what's called ELC funding, which has very specific parameters in the expenditures that are allowed. So the expenditures allowed in this particular grant application, which we put forth, were specifically for testing. The testing that we described in the application is for commercial labs to do the testing through mobile units. We thought that would be best to respond to the various needs throughout the county.
Will any of the funding provided by this grant application be used to determine who's been vaccinated and who is not?
No.
Page one, on paragraphs...
Sorry, could I just add a clarification? So as part of testing, I believe when people are tested, there are a series of questions. One of those questions is whether or not somebody has been vaccinated. And I believe the person has the ability to respond or not respond to that question. And the specific purpose, excuse me, for that is to determine breakthrough cases. So somebody might come for testing and say, to the test lab, mobile unit, I've been vaccinated, but I think I've gotten COVID. So in that context, there may be those questions, but this grant is not designed to ask and be directed towards that specific issue.
Okay. And then, Dr. Spears, on page one, paragraph seven of the grant request, states that there are 921 documented COVID-related deaths. I know that's in Pennell County, of course. And I think back in January, February, I asked a question about what percentage of the deaths had comorbidities. Do you know the number of the 921 we've had so far coming here?
My apologies. I don't know the exact number. However, I do believe on the weekly report that comes out, we do now have a pie chart with regard to the percentage of deaths. I do know, the last time I checked, it was over 70%.
Okay, 70% approximately. And this funding, does it come, it comes from the federal government to state government to us, right?
Correct.
So then the federal government sort of has ultimate control over the terms of the grant?
Yes.
Okay. And what, how will this help Pennell County?
How this will help Pennell County is that we will have more accessible COVID-19 testing. We actually ran out of funding back in January and the state did pick up and helped us out with that. We used to have testing here in Florence, at the Florence Library. We also had testing in Casa Grande, over at the, what used to be the Boys and Girls Club there. And we don't have those. We're looking to be able to offer testing through these mobile units in areas of need.
Okay. And this is PCR testing?
Yes.
And do you recall recently whether there was some question about the effectiveness of PCR? Can you speak to that?
Sure. There have been debates in the literature, in the research, about PCR testing. Some of those have been initiated by the person who actually developed PCR testing. And so those debates continue with regard to effectiveness of PCR testing.
And this grant includes money to have people sent to hotels who are infected. Tell me why that occurs.
Right. So there is a portion of the grant that allows for what's called hoteling. And that is specific to individuals or families where they may have someone who's tested positive and they don't want to reinfect other people in the household, such as perhaps an elder person who lives there or an immunocompromised person. So that money's available if it were to be needed.
And is there money in the grant to pay for the care of the elderly person that was sent to the hotel?
So a caregiver, perhaps? So the way the grant was written was to have a certain block of funds where more than one person could be placed in a hotel if that were needed.
So in your expert opinion, do you think this will, how will this prevent the spread of COVID?
Well, I think early detection is helpful. So if someone is able to test rapidly and determines that they are confirmed to have COVID, that that's going to limit their activities as they feel responsible for those. So early testing is going to assist with, you know, surveillance, but it's also going to assist with helping people make decisions about, you know, exposing others.
Okay. But it's using the PCR testing that we're, that's at present questionable. And so then we're going to hire approximately six people. Are the six people we hire, as I recall, there are analysts, data analysts, and GIS mappers. So they'll, they'll put a pin on the map of the house or close to the neighborhood. So we have a couple of those. And who else do we have? Who are the other four?
So actually, the GIS is a package we consulted with IT. We're grateful to Sarah Hess in IT, who does our dashboard now. And she uses the GIS software package, which is fairly expensive, as you saw in the itemized statement. So we spoke with IT and thought we would help out by requesting that funding for them because they're helping us with this dashboard. The personnel that are listed there are actually already employed and working on the COVID project. There, if I recall correctly, there may be one that is currently not. So their salaries, at the point that they're working on COVID, would be reimbursed through this particular project.
And then the contractors, on the grant application, it didn't list the names of the contractors. Do we already employ those contractors? Or is this a new, would this be something we'd bid out?
So we're currently working with procurement to put out an RFP for that particular project.
The amount, I'm looking at my note here, is $5,4,500 approximately for contractors. I don't have any questions. I have, I'm concerned about the $6 million worth of essentially federal money that's being funneled to the county. And I think it was Sam earlier mentioned we're kind of giving up our freedoms incrementally. And I think having, having folks go to door to door or testing being mandated is a concern for citizens. And the Supreme Court, incidentally, ruled yesterday, I think it was, that HUD could not demand that people, could not demand that people not pay their rent or that, I think the ruling was that landlords, the federal government could not mandate that landlords not collect their rent. And then just hours later, the president said, well, the CDC, we're going to do it under the CDC. And we don't really care what the Supreme Court says. So I'm concerned about the federal encroachment and letting them get in the foot, their foot in the door, Pennell County with this $6 million. So that's sort of my concern. And is it, is it going to do any good for Pennell County or very little good compared to what we're potentially inviting in? Those are my concerns. Mr. McClellan?
If I could just make a clarification, because I noticed you had mentioned mandating testing. So I want to make it really clear that this would be available for people who choose to be tested, but that we would not be mandating that someone, someone be tested. So I just want to make sure we're clear about that.
Volunteer, the volunteering to be tested. Nobody's making them be tested.
Not yet.
Well, but you know, really, what we're doing here is we're putting in a grant application we don't even know if we'll get. I mean, this is all speculation at this point, so.
Yes, if I could just clarify, the reason that exact amount is there is that the state provided every single county with the amount that we would be allowed to apply for based on population. So we all got a certain base. Every single county got a certain base. And then based on population, that was our final number. And so we applied for our final number in its entirety.
That explanation.
Mr. Chairman, question. In all that going along, I heard, you know, GIS tagging of homes. Is that what I heard?
No, right now, our dashboard, actually, we worked really hard to help our school districts out very early on. And so, they had been asking for quite some time for ZIP code data with regard to cases in ZIP codes, as well as school districts. And that was very early on when the schools were provided benchmarks of, you know, case counts and there were determinations being made by the state with regard to, you know, low, moderate, and high transmission.
Right, I get you.
So, that's the GIS mapping is, if you look on our dashboard, you can actually click on the tabs. And one of those tabs is ZIP codes. And it basically shows confirmed cases. And I think what's important to remember is those are, those are people who chose to get tested. So, you know, and we've seen testing numbers fluctuate over the past years.
Well, my question there is, and so who has access to that GIS tagging of those folks that have tested positive? Because that, that's a concern, because that's like, oh, look, you have it, you know?
Yeah, so they're not specific to a residence. It's basically, our dashboard talks about numbers in ZIP codes. And so, when we worked with IT to develop the dashboard, we were really concerned and did not want, even to the degree if there was only one case in a certain area, we were concerned that maybe that case could be identified. And so, we didn't want that. We worked real hard with IT to keep these numbers global and not tag a residence.
It's anonymous, it's not specifically identifiable as to who has.
Correct.
It's not an address, it's simply a ZIP code?
Yes.
Okay, that makes me feel a little better.
8122.
Yes.
Or 852, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one follow-up question.
Okay.
How does, if we are only using ZIP code, how then does the contact tracing work if we're not identifying the person?
Right, so, for public view, persons are not identified. But when lab results come to every public health department, they do come with the name of the person. And that person is contacted by public health and a case investigation is begun. And public health speaks with the person who has been diagnosed or tested positive for COVID and talks with them about who they may have been in contact with. Some people provide that information, other people don't. And that's how contact tracing happens.
Okay. Item D. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we reject the grant application on item D for public health.
I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded, all in favor, in favor of rejecting the grant, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Nay?
I said nay.
Oh, you did? Okay, I didn't hear, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. So, that did not pass. Do I have another motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the grant application submission for $6.236578 for detection.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Passed, 3-2. Thank you. Now, item number two on this agenda is your, I think it's the Public Health Annual Report.
Yes.
Which can be riveting.
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to present a very shortened version. What was submitted was 51 pages. I would like to just highlight a few, a few points.
Oh, thank you.
From last year. And would be happy to answer any questions. So, thank you for uploading that, Natasha. So, we'll just kind of move through it pretty quickly. And again, this report is required statutorily under Title 36. We do want to thank all of leadership for your support, also for your questions. I think it's helpful to have questions and debate and discussion. And we sincerely appreciate that as well. So, thank you to all of you for this past year, which has been challenging, to say the least. I do want to acknowledge the division managers, excuse me, of the different departments and divisions in public health. They have worked tirelessly and each unquestionably are experts, subject matter experts, in their field. And this team really is second to none. So, this is just their photos and which divisions they oversee. So, next slide, please. I'm not going to go through the whole series of events that we all lived through. This is actually the months preceding the fiscal year. And so, you can see, and you have all had the report with regard to the timeline. And these are very specific, select points, obviously, many more points. If I could just point out, you know, we did see the first death in Pinellas County in April of 2020. And that was related to a confirmed COVID-19 death. In the short period before the fiscal year began, there were 5,877 cases of COVID that were reported to public health. And of course, you all experienced the distress of people trying to call in and our phone lines being flooded. And that went right through when we were testing, when we were vaccinating. And we were grateful to the leadership and to the board for helping us get more people onboard with the call center. So, next slide. So, this is really the fiscal year that we're talking about. And again, I'm not going to go through all of those points, but you can, you know, see them in the report. And we will upload that onto the website as well. So, next slide is actually, obviously ends June, our fiscal year. And, you know, there has been much talk, even currently, about vaccinations. And you can see by the end of June, over 75% of those who were 65 and older had received vaccinations in Pinellas County. If we just go to the next slide, we do want to point out that most of the year was diverted to work in the Incident Command Center. And that was from all divisions. Environmental Health, School Health, all of our divisions came together and worked really tirelessly, 24/7, taking calls, reading lab results, classifying cases, conducting case investigations and contact tracing and testing and vaccinating. So, that was just a sample of, it was really all hands on deck. Next slide, please. You can see with regard to cost, you know, in the, in the last year from March to year-to-date, which was at the end of June when this report was prepared, you can see the difference in costs with regard to outbreak. When we had the measles, the hepatitis A, and of course, COVID, which has been mostly to our county. Next slide. We do want to stress that the entire county came together to help us. We did put a call-out to county management. And they actually put the call-out to every single department in this county. We had IT come and help us. We were grateful to the county attorney's office for sending people to help us, the Office of the Public Defender, Community Development. We just had a huge support from, from the county. So, thank you so much. And the next slide. Our emergency preparedness with oversight by Cory Redden worked tirelessly as well. She personally distributed PPE. She drove remdesivir to the hospitals in the middle of the night sometimes. She was able to purchase the mobile morgue trailer with funding through FEP. And of course, she was also co-directing in the Incident Command Center. Next slide, of course, our infectious diseases, Epi-surveillance. They were largely directed to the COVID effort, but still working on tuberculosis, sexually transmitted infections, as well as all of the other communicable diseases. We'd get calls with regard to rabies, all kinds of other diseases that they were responding to. So, next slide. And you've all seen our Epi curve for last fiscal year. Our cases peaked December, January, February, and then came down. So, next slide. Environmental Health. These are just a few highlights of each division. Investigations continued. They sent their team members to the ICC to help us, answering phones, driving specimens. Next slide. Central Appointment Desk. And we've had many discussions about the call center over the past year. There was a typo in the actual 51-page report that you got, so it's corrected on this slide. And so, you can see the huge increase in calls that were taken by our call center. And I do want to indicate, they have those happy smiling faces. And many of the calls were from extremely upset, distressed people, people needing reassurance. And they are really a tribute to our, our entire public health team. So, next slide. On-the-go Transportation. So, we do have our transportation unit that, you know, transports patients to dialysis, especially out in the copper corridor area. We've got transportation services. And they, as well, were diverted to work on COVID last year, driving specimens to the state lab in Phoenix. And they did then continue also transporting patients to where they needed to go. Next slide, please. Oh, I guess that's out of order, my apologies. That is, Environmental Services continued with all of their work. And the next slide. Community Health Division. They are responsible for schools, school liaisons, for our child fatality review, opiate fatality review, and now the newly added suicide fatality review. So, they, as well, with schools that were closed to onsite services, were diverted to work in the Incident Command Center. So, next slide. We had one of the first schools in the state to identify COVID-positive students. We set up a call center for schools, for parents, for school personnel. And we held weekly meetings with school superintendents throughout the entire year. You can see the focus shifted with regard to where people were diverted to work. Next slide. Clinics is well shifted. Our clinics were closed during the initial phases of COVID. And then, services shifted to vaccinations. However, you can still see that we did offer the other clinic services, family planning, adults and child immunizations, treatment for sexually transmitted diseases, and tuberculosis services. So, next slide. Most of you are well aware that we had the Florence Pod operating with federal government, FEMA coming in and assisting, and the US Forest Service vaccinators, as well as our own public health clinic staff. So, we continue to offer those services through our public health clinics. So, next slide. WIC and vital records. Clearly, you can see we continue to serve WIC clients, 96,000 of them last year. We saw and served many individuals who were requesting birth certificates, death certificates, continued with telehealth as well. And so, that group as well were diverted at times to the ICC. So, next slide. I think there's only a couple more, just to highlight some things. The Medical Forensics Department Division that conducts child abuse exams, child sexual abuse, child physical abuse, sexual assault, domestic violence. The forensic nurses were one of the first nurses to actually go in to residences where people were sick and were requesting testing. The nurses there continued on a 24/7 call-out basis, providing those exams throughout last year. And then, the last slide, I think, last two slides were just an overview of our budget last year. And you can see our expenses. We did have a significant amount of funding through grant funding, which you'll see kind of on the next slide. So, you can see, we do have a significant portion of work that gets done through grant funding. Small portion through the general fund, and then, of course, sales tax, and then other revenue for services that we offer. And then, our very last slide, just to really indicate how grateful we are to work in Pinellas County. And we had hundreds of individuals and partners locally, statewide, federally. And so, last year, we are really grateful that the fiscal year for last year is behind us. And we actually look forward to healthier days ahead. Any questions?
Any questions for Tasha?
Thank you.
All right. Well, it does require a board action. So, what's the board's pleasure? Do you want to accept the report as presented?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Public Health Annual Report for fiscal year 2020 through 2021.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes, have it. Thank you, Tasha.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks.
Adjourn the Public Health and go back to our Board of Supervisors meeting?
Number nine.
I believe on number nine? Need a scoreboard up here or something. Okay, number nine. On the agenda is a discussion approval or disapproval of a resolution from the Board of, by the Board of Supervisors for warranty deed. Joel Ortiz, oh, there he is.
Right here.
There he is.
Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Joel Ortiz, Pinellas County Public Works Deputy Director. Yes, as you mentioned, item nine is a request for acceptance of a warranty deed of real property. This real property was offered by donation by Brian and Gail Brogie. The real property is located in Oracle, north of Mountain, Mount Lemon, and east of Dodge Road. Specifically, in Oracle, this property is adjacent to current Pinellas County-owned parcel. And the current county-owned parcel has our skate park and a community garden located on it. And this proposed donation property is intended to hopefully expand the community garden that's existing there. We currently have a lease agreement with Oracle Community We currently have a lease agreement with Oracle Community Learning Garden, and if it's the board's pleasure to accept this warranty deed, we would go back with the garden, community garden folks, and amend the current lease that we have. We do have Liz Harris-Tuck. She's the treasurer for the Oracle Community Learning Garden, and she's available for questions, and she'd like to say a couple words, too.
She would? Liz?
Hello?
Come up, name, your name, your location, and...
Thank you. I'm Liz Harris-Tuck, and I'm the treasurer of the Oracle Community Learning Garden, and I guess a professional board member, because I'm also the chair of the Workforce Development Board. So, I really, what I want to do is just thank you all for the support of the community garden, and just give you a little bit of an update. So, over 30 families are now gardening at the community garden. We received a grant from you all last year, and we use that to construct a gazebo that will be used for an outdoor classroom. We, before COVID, remember, there was that time, kids from our local school used to come to the garden on Mondays, and we hired someone to write a curriculum, and our curriculum teaches about plants and pollination and how things grow, and it agrees with STEM standards, and it's been a great experience. One day I was there, and there was this little boy, he was about five years old, and he had a bunch of carrots. Carrots are about that long, and he had them in his hand, and he came running up to me, and he said, "Look, look, I've got millions and millions of carrots." And so, so we're, and another thing that we've discovered is, we're helping improve a connection between grandparents and kids, because we still have grandparents in Oracle who actually garden, but we're helping the kids bond better. The last thing I want to tell you is that we connect with the Winkleman Conservation District. They donated two hoop houses to us, and in one of them, we grow starts from seeds and then sell those starts to local gardeners. But in the other house, we have, at this point in time, almost 100 willow trees. Last week, we planted 44 of them along the San Pedro River in Dudleyville, and in the fall, the other 900 and some will be planted in Kearney along the Gila River. Both of these areas were destroyed by wildfires. So, I'm really just here to say thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Liz. Any questions for, okay, board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item nine as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel. Item 10. Approval or disapproval of another resolution. Leo Lu and Mr. Golf. Is anybody presenting on this? Oh, there you go. Mr. Golf, how are you?
Thank you. My name is Charles Golf, go by Charlie. I'm the Living Gold Canyon, I'm the president of SALT, the Superstition Area Land Trust, and thank you to all the supervisors for listening to this, our description of this This, this resolution, while the money would come from Resolution Copper Mine if and when it is approved, Resolution Copper Mine is obligated to pay an equalization payment to the Southwest Regional National Forest Service, and the equalization is to make up the difference between the value, which we don't know yet, because the appraisals have not been admitted, have not been released, the difference in value between the nearly 2,400 acres that Resolution Copper will get, which is now national forest land, and the nearly 5,400 acres that the federal government, different units, will get. And the reason we expect that the resolution will have to pay a very large equalization payment is because the appraisal includes the value of the copper under that national forest land that they will get. So, again, I stress, our resolution is really aimed at where and how the National Forest Service spends that money that Resolution Copper Mine will be obligated to get. They fully expect that to be tens of millions of dollars, that equalization payment. Can't give the figure, the top figure they've given me, but certainly over 100 million would not shock them. And I'd like to give just a little bit, so the resolution you've got probably before you, and I will try to rush through, given the hour, my presentation, if I can start at the first one. There. SALT's mission is to conserve the natural sedor and desert open space surrounding the superstition wilderness area, but since it's federal land in all directions except south, the action has always been on the south border, which is almost all Arizona State Trust land. Next, just a couple quick slides, you can flip to the next one. There's some pretty spectacular areas here, and the first efforts done around the year 2000, there's actually not a date on the superstition area land plan, they studied topography, slopes, and you could just leap through those fairly quickly, drainage, and there's grazing, and hold on this one. And at the end of the study, they concluded that, and I wish I had a pointer, but maybe I do, they concluded that the areas you see in green, whoops, I'm going the wrong way. Can you get me back? I'm trying to make the pointer go.
I don't think the pointer worked.
I, yes, I don't. The green is what they, they suggested, long before my time, should be conserved. Does that work? Yeah. So, the green is what they said should be conserved. So, this is Gold Canyon. This is U.S. 60. This is a proposed bypass. To the best of my knowledge, that's the first place the bypass was ever mentioned. Here's Florence Junction, here's heading off towards Superior. This is all federal land. This is the superstition wilderness area, starting at about here, all the way over to about here. This is two sections of land north of Gold Canyon, all of this. Despite some of the more recent controversy in the Gold Canyon area, even this, which was the most optimistic effort to conserve land, as you can see quite a bit, this yellow is all open to development. Next slide. In fact, they studied 104 square miles, and they said 57% of that should be open for development. 43% or about 45 sections, 45 square miles, should be conserved as open space. Next. Before that was ever done, they thought that wasn't really enough. They started superstition vistas. The land plan was done under SALT. This was, they thought we didn't have the capacity, they were probably right at the time. They needed something even much larger scale, 275 square miles, something bigger than Mesa, Chandler, Tempe, and Gilbert combined. It assimilated without change, really, the superstition area land plan. Next. And if you see it on a map, you can see that pink area, clearly quite large, but up in the north, up in this area, is what the superstition area land plan covered. Next. That was just the dreams of nonprofits, but when Penal County incorporated a good part of these two dreams into the Open Space and Trails Master Plan in 2007, and then into the Comprehensive Plan in 2008, that gave it some legitimacy, and is, if not exactly a roadmap, a general plan for both development and conservation. Next. I'm not sure why we're quite that crosshatched. Can you bring me back there? That was my mistake. For what it's worth, what you announced at the beginning of the meeting, the proposed major comprehensive plan amendment, was this nearly 12,000 acres. This is Parata Regional Park, which is in the planning stages and ready for development. This is Gold Canyon again. So, that had us fairly excited because of, as we'll get to in a moment, it proposed that all of this land north of Parata Road, almost all of it, was going to become open space at the auction winner's expense. That's huge. But we've always been very interested in trying to conserve all of this over here, or as much as we can. My slide isn't nearly as crosshatched as this, I'm not quite sure why, but you can see the basic point. If you compare this, the area that's white here is what's planned on the county's present, pleasant maps, present maps, as if not open space, the lowest level of development. This, again, is Parata Park, here's Gold Canyon, and here is this quarter circle, your ranch, if any of you are looking at that. Below that, the yellow area, can develop at up to three and a half dwellings per acre. Above that, it certainly couldn't be, in the white area, more than one dwelling per, is it an acre or an acre and a quarter? So, this is the best we have as open space at present. If you flip back to the last one, and just let them do a quick comparison, so, not up to the dream of what the superstition area land plan and superstition vistas ask for, but still pretty good, and when you get something like the last comprehensive plan, the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment that went away a couple days ago, that this would be paid for, my calculation says that that's probably what had a value of over $300 million, that 3,000 acres that might have been conserved. Next, and next. That area is extremely heavily used. This isn't the entire superstition wilderness area, is visited by about 200 and nearly 230,000 people, and that's 2018. I see Kent Taylor is here, and it's from his counts, from his trail counting data, and from some vehicle counts on Parata Road in 2018, we come up with that very conservative estimate, and just in that area that we're proposing to try to conserve. I do have backup data for all that. There's lots of studies here, Maricopa County and around, that show there's tremendous economic value, as well as conservation and ecological and recreation value in open space. This is just perhaps a little clearer, if you look at those yellow areas, again, they're the areas that even this optimistic superstition area land plan said we should conserve. So, effectively, our proposal is that when Resolution Copper has to make that huge payment to Region 3 of the National Forest Service, that we try to bring that money back, not only to Arizona, but to Penal County, and specifically near the site of the impact of the mine, because mines are quite destructive, but gets a lot of conservation that the county and the local area has a long history of supporting in any case. This land, by the way, over here to the east, there was a huge area, we wouldn't expect would be very expensive at all, because it's just so rugged, it's too rugged for development. Next.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Could I interrupt? And Charlie, I think it was closer to 4,000 acres that would have been, would have set aside had that state trust land concept gone forward, and so that's quite a shame that that didn't get looked at further. But can you, I mean, as far as last I heard, Resolution Copper's still on hold, so can you tell us the status of where the Resolution Copper is, and is it even going to happen? Is this money going to be available?
Of course, that, that's always a basic belief. What we do know is that several weeks ago, probably nearly a month ago now, the Biden Administration, Justice Department, released a statement saying, "They see no reason that the land exchange cannot take place." And to a lot of us in the environmental community, we think that's, we don't quite know when, but we think that's kind of the release that was critical, that it will take place. We think the current resolution, everyone involved, I think, knows that a certain Arizona congressman, who is Chair of Natural Resources Committee in the House of Representatives, has been one of the major stumbling blocks. We think this resolution, which is the first in a series, thank you, Chris Keller, for helping massage this into something that we think many other government units, Apache Junction, Superior, Florence, Gilbert, it doesn't, the identification with the superstitions doesn't begin and end in Penal County, the whole East Valley, over a million and a half people strongly identify with the superstitions. So, we're hoping that you will pass this resolution, which doesn't cost us anything, it brings money back to this area that Resolution Copper will have to pay, and by the way, not as an IOU cash, at the time of the land exchange, they have to pay all of that upfront. We're only trying to influence where and how the U.S. Forest Service spends that money. Resolution is obligated to pay it anyway. We can't tell you the number, because the appraisals have not yet been released, despite the fact that the legislation says that at the time, as soon as feasible, I think's the terminology, after passage of this bill, the appraisals will be completed. I think that bill passed in late 2013, for the 2014, it was attached to the Defense Authorization Bill. President Obama is the one who had to sign it, probably willingly, but it was attached by John McCain to the Defense Authorization Bill. In any case, this is all very solid as to what has to happen if that gets approved, and it isn't hurting Resolution at all, they have to pay it anyway, it's where the money gets spent. Next. And I won't go through it. This slide has the details of what the bill says, gives options, they could have bought up a lot of land had they known what the appraisal was well in advance, that were acceptable, non-federal conservation land. It's so late in the game, to Supervisor Sertie's point, that it would take years to do that process, so almost certainly, if it gets approved, it's going to be that they make a cash payment. Next, and I'm glad to go over that. There are, some of you are probably saying, "Ooh, dealing with the state land department." Yes, but there's legislation, since 2013, the Arizona Revised Statutes, that layout, just go through the next two, I won't take the time to back up one, back up one, one more. I won't go through it. There are ways to, there's Arizona Revised Statutes by which this can be done, and you could even give a maximum of eight years to make this come about. Hopefully, it could be done much sooner. Next. I think that's essentially, let me try one more.
Supervisor Goodman has a question.
Where's the, where's the state? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Where's the state in regards to what you're proposing? Where they at? I mean, as far as-
State land?
State land, yes.
Well, certainly, I know that the Commissioner is quite aware of it. I presented some of this to her over lunch, over dinner, actually, gee, a number of years ago. I think from their standpoint, they don't care what the source of the money is, as long as it's legal. Their constitutionally mandated process is that they maximize the income from state land, whether they sell it or whatever else. I think you could infer, since state land proposed this amendment, yes, we all know some of the details of why and what was behind it, but I have to think it was the state land commissioner's influence that tried to conserve a lot of this land north of Peralta Road and protecting with open space Gold Canyon's east border. I'm among those, as a Gold Canyon resident, I live not very far from there, right about there. I don't understand, if anyone looked at the facts, why there was any objection to this. Salt, under my leadership, starting tomorrow night, is doing a webinar series aimed at better understanding by the public of the underlying issues. And the three slides are central to my argument today, will be central to the whole series.
Charlie, can you explain more of the process? So Resolution Copper then has this money freed up, but every time state land disposes of land, has to go up for an auction. Can someone then come in and outbid Resolution Copper?
In principle, but Resolution, remember, Resolution is not involved in this. They make the payment to the Region Three, Southworth Region, of the National Forest Service. Once they made their payment, which they're obligated to do anyway.
So National Forest can buy state land without going through the auction process?
Nope. They have to go through the auction process. There's, it's constitutionally mandated, has to go through the auction process. Those revised statutes that I mentioned to you spell out how even if you designate it for conservation, the appraisal cannot, no sweetheart deals. It's got to be honest market value. It will still be extremely expensive, which is why, when the opportunity was there to conserve whatever the acreage, almost everything north of Peralta Road, at the auction winner's expense, that figured to be the most, well, still figures to be by far the most expensive of that state trust land, because it's so built, most of it's very buildable. So we're right back, we never left. We're where we were when I showed you, I don't know if we could scroll back, but it's probably, yeah, that was, that's where we are now. Since that, that was my mistake, back to that one. Yeah, that does the same thing. Keep going. Do we get that with the yellow? Oh, you're going the wrong way. Sorry about that. There, that will do. That last one, the one with the yellow. There, hold there. So this yellow line, the difference between white and yellow, it's under all that check mark, it doesn't really matter. The proposed amendment would have added 1,200 acres at least to what is now yellow, to what would have been conserved. Guess it doesn't matter anymore. So even as conservationists, we're excited about the possibility.
So you would have been for that proposed amendment?
Actually, I had in my, I have in my pocket a unanimous approval of the Salt Board.
Just checking, just trying to make-
We hadn't announced it yet. We weren't going to announce it yet. I didn't, I knew that it might well come up, and I was prepared to if I had to, so I guess you extracted it. We thought we might be a little more believable if we held that information as far as we could. But yes, I have a unanimous vote as of a week ago Monday, that we would have been for it. We would point out, of course, of course, we'd like to have everything that the superstition area land plan called for, but life's full of compromises and collaborations, and we're quite willing to do that. So I hope you will support this. I don't see that it costs the county or any of us anything. We have reason to believe that a number of cities are waiting your lead. And we've got two nonprofits, Salt being one of them, that have already approved a slightly different version of this before, thank you, Chris Keller, before we massaged it. And thank you, Chris, again, because we purposely ask him to keep it in a form that we can simply substitute Apache Junction, or Superior, or Mesa, or Gilbert, and all the others, all governmental agencies, a stack of papers from that, a separate stack of papers that will be from nonprofits, of which we have two.
All right. Any other questions or comments at this time? What's the board's pleasure on this resolution?
So I move that we approve Resolution Number 080421-RM0, supporting the superstition area land trust request of Pinale County Board of Supervisors to support their position requesting that Region Three of the National Forest Service use the required equalization payment from Resolution Copper Mine for the purchase of conservation land in the superstition foothills.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did I forget something, Chris? All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Brings us to item number 11, Discussion Approval or Disapproval of a Resolution Supporting the Mission Vision of the Property of the Gold Canyon Community, Inc. Mr. Ravelis, Leo, who's going to do this?
Mr. Ravelis is here in the audience. Mr. Ravelis, did you want to speak to this item, or do you want us to?
Mr. Chairman, no major announcement, other than the resolution speaks for itself, and we're happy to be a collaborator in support of good government. Thank you.
Thank you. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 11 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. Let's see here. Item number 12, Discussion Approval or Disapproval of Preliminary Process for Potential Partnership Between Pinale County Housing and Row Company. There we go.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Rolanda Cephas, Housing Director. Our department has been in discussions with affordable housing developer, Roers Company, about some affordable housing, multi-family developments in Pinale County. Today, James Riley and his team is here to present to the board their plans for a multi-family development in Casa Grande and Maricopa, and a potential partnership with the Housing Authority.
Okay. You guys ready to present?
Are you still awake?
We're still awake. We're still here. Interesting stuff being discussed here. Thank you, first of all, for having us, board, and Commissioners here. My name is Shane LaFave with Roers Companies, and James Riley and Kevin Surgeon are here with me. Don't want to take a lot of your time today, just wanted to present a few things here. Wanted to give you a little bit of background, just on who we are and what we're about, and then talk specifically about a couple of projects that we're working on, and would love to partner with you guys on. And then just talk a little bit about the Section 42 program, and just to make sure we're all singing from the same hymnal, just about what we're talking about here when we say affordable housing. So just to give a little background on Roers Companies, we were founded about 10 years ago by Brian and Kent Roers. We originally started in kind of western North Dakota was where we originally started doing projects, and that was kind of during the oil boom out in the Bakken oil fields out there. And Brian and Kent Roers are from rural southwest Minnesota, and so that was kind of a natural fit for them. And it is really kind of indicative of just the feel and the spirit of our company. It's very small town, down-to-earth. We want to be good neighbors. We want to know the people that we're working with and be good partners. And that's, you know, it's grown over time, but that spirit kind of lives on in the company. And we've since expanded into Minneapolis, and into Iowa, and into Wisconsin, and now, you know, looking at, working here in Arizona, and working in some other states as well. And the mission remains the same, though, and that's to provide housing for folks kind of of all different income levels and age levels. And we provide kind of the full service of housing, whether that be student, or affordable, or market rate, assisted living, or 55-plus. We focus on housing, and we don't get into industrial, we don't get into commercial or office or anything like that. We want to provide housing. That's our mission. That's our objective. We're going to stay in our lane and keep doing that. And so, you know, as kind of I mentioned about the small-town feel and wanting to be good neighbors, we go into all of our projects with a long-term mindset. We're not here to build it and sell it and be on our way. You know, we manage all of the projects that we build, and we intend to be there for the next 15, 20, 30, however many years. We want to know the people that we're working with and partnering with, and we want to work together and hopefully be a part, a good part of the community for the long term. So we're, we want to come here and we want to be here to stay. Just to give you a little background on us and our team, our development team is, there's about 10 of us, and most of us have an affordable housing background. That's my background, that's James' background, that's Kevin's background, is in affordable housing. And we've done market rate, we've done some other stuff, but this is kind of what we started our careers doing, and what we're going to continue to do and continue to work on. As I kind of mentioned, Core Living is the branch of our company that is dedicated to the property management side, and we've got a little over 5,000 units across six states. And the President and the Director of Property Management both have an affordable housing background as well, and so that's really intentional, and that's really continues to be the focus of what we do. And so, kind of lastly, as I mentioned, you know, we want to, as we think about these projects and as we put them together, we don't want to just do that only based on our opinions or our objectives. We want input. We want partners. We want to work with cities and municipalities and counties and housing authorities, and, you know, those folks are always going to know their areas and their specific community needs better than we can. And so we want to, we want to work collaboratively and use that knowledge to create the best projects and developments and housing situations for people that we possibly can. And, you know, we, as James and Kevin will talk about, we have about 400 units between the projects that we're looking at here, and we would like, would love to partner with you in that. And we're here for the long term. This could provide a great affordable housing amenity for the community for a long time to come. And so we want your input. We'd love to partner with you. And so that just gives you a little background on who we are. I'll turn it over to Kevin here to start talking about the projects more specifically.
Thank you, Shane. Happy to be here, so thank you for having us. So the first project that we'll talk about is in the city of Casa Grande. The site located on that map, kind of aerial view in the yellow star there, sort of south of the main strip of the city, just kind of northeast of the new Lucid Motors facility that's happening the next couple, coming years. So it's located on the corner of South Treacle and Jimmy Kerr Boulevard. Our proposed development will be 200 units consisting of one, two, and three-bedroom units. There'll be eight residential buildings, three-story walk-up style buildings with a central clubhouse with various community amenities, so your typical swimming pool, fitness center, totlot, grilling areas, things to that extent. This is sort of a closer view of our development, about 10 acres. And so this is a very preliminary sort of site fit with our architectural team. By no means is this finalized, it's just sort of a preliminary fit to see, you know, can we fit the amount of units we have to do on this site? And that's the case. So as you can kind of see in the center, there is our community area with the clubhouse, swimming pool, and sort of our central community amenity area, so. So a portion of our development team, a group called VTBS is our architects, and PEA Group is our civil engineers, and then sort of working in the process to find a general contractor that's experienced in the area, and sort of vetting various groups. And, you know, our intention wherever we develop is really find, you know, local experts who have a lot of experience, you know, in these areas. This is just a few examples of the architect's past projects all over the country. And I will pass it on to James to talk about Maricopa. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin, and thanks for having us today. As Kevin mentioned, my name's James Riley. I'm a Senior Development Associate with Roers Companies. Talking about our other developments in Maricopa, just want to preface by saying it's still in the preliminary stages, working through initial entitlements with the city, but our plan is for 200 units here, again, having a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, very similar to our Casa Grande development, in that it will have one centralized clubhouse and amenities area with pool, fitness center, community room, things of that nature, and then nine freestanding residential buildings throughout the site. This just shows, again, a little bit more of a zoom in on the site.
I'm sorry, what street are those right there?
Can you go back?
Oh, sorry. So that is on Iron Point Road and North Porter Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's just, that's the Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway just to the north of it.
Right.
And if there are any questions throughout the presentation, please feel free to chime Right here is our preliminary fit plan, which we're working through with the city right now. This was really done to, again, confirm that we can fit the amount of required units there, but this will be further refined as we work with the city and community on the Similar to our Casa Grande development, we try to work with all local groups here on the architectural, civil, and general contracting side. All of these, or I should say Todd and Associates and Atwell Group have extensive experience in Pinale County, and whoever we work with as our general contractor will be locally based to provide that area expertise. These right here just give you some examples of the projects that Todd and Associates has done. They design a lot of market rate housing, which fits our design intent well. We design all of our projects to be indistinguishable from market rate housing, so we try to work with the best architects that we absolutely can. Here are some preliminary elevations, just to kind of show what our three-story walk-up buildings will look like. You can see a lot of stucco, brown natural colors to fit within the desert, but bringing a more contemporary feel to it, to not make the project feel dated, while still integrating well into the community. And then here's our clubhouse elevation, again, using some of those darker stucco colors, but also including some white and flat roofs to add a little bit more of a modern taste to it, but again, trying to integrate as well as we can into the community. So we also wanted to talk about the Section 42 tax credit program. And when most people think of affordable housing, they think of the Section 8 housing that a lot of people are familiar with. But for a few exceptions, no new Section 8 housing can actually be developed. Back in the 80s, it was replaced by the Section 42 Tax Credit Program. And the main difference with this program is that, or the main difference between the two programs is the form of subsidy. With Section 8 housing, the subsidy is ongoing, so a tenant pays, property- With Section 8 housing, the subsidy is ongoing, so a tenant pays approximately a third of their income and the government or HUD makes up the rest. The difference with the Section 42 program is that our subsidy is received on the front end. So, in exchange for keeping our rents at a certain level, in this case, the 60% AMI level, we receive tax credits. And these are federal tax credits that are, excuse me, administered at the state level. So, essentially, we get these tax credits that are calculated based on the cost of our project. And those are then sold to a tax credit investor to provide our equity in the project. With this program, we still have a conventional first mortgage. We pay a mortgage each month on these properties. But the tax credits make up about 30% of the total financing, more or less. Within the Section 42 program, there are two types of projects, 9% projects and 4% projects. What we're proposing is a 4% project. The reason being is that the tax credits are non-competitive. So, 9% tax credit projects, there's a set amount of credits each year and that's determined by Congress. So, with these capped amounts of credits, you generally see smaller projects, projects in the 50 to 100-unit range, sometimes up to 120, but generally, they are limited just because that credit is limited. We're able to do larger 200-unit projects by using the non-competitive tax credit or the 4% tax credit, which involves financing from AZDA, the Arizona Industrial Development Authority, to finance part of our projects as well. So, the difference between the 9% and 4% is that 4% have a lower proportion of tax credits to the overall cost. So, while a 4% project might have 30% of the financing through tax credits, a 9% project is generally 70% financed by tax credits. So, the debt on a 4% project is greatly important, which I'll get to here in a second. But last thing, on the incomes, as I mentioned, we're proposing restricting these projects to the 60% area median income level. And you can see there the rents, which are what our tenants would pay. But then also to the right there, it shows the incomes that folks would have to make to qualify here. And the incomes are adjusted based on the number of dependents. So, a single person with no dependents can make $33,000 and afford to live here. And a single parent of four could potentially make $51,000 and afford to live here. So, it's really meant to provide housing to folks that live and work in the community. But, you know, these people have full-time jobs, they're working, they're hard-working and contributing to society and the communities. But they're starting to feel pressure based on these rising rental rates that I know Pinell and Maricopa County are really starting to experience. So, as was mentioned, we're here seeking approval for a partnership with the housing authority. What this would involve is the general, is the housing authority as our general partner in the partnership, which would provide a real estate tax exemption, but no financial obligation of the county or the county housing authority. The reason we are requesting this is due to the nature of 4% tax credit deals in that they do have a conventional first mortgage. And as such, they're subject to certain underwriting parameters, looking at the income and the amount of debt that they can support. By partnering with the housing authority, we're able to, we'll be able to gain an exemption through Arizona State statute from real estate taxes, which, as you can see by the numbers there, will help make up that $2.2 million gap in the financing. So, the partnership with you all and the housing authority is integral to the overall financial feasibility of these projects. And then, lastly, we just wanted to summarize some of these proposed benefits of the partnership. The first and foremost being high-quality, safe, and clean affordable housing for Pinell County and its residents, as well as a commitment to long-term affordability and ownership. One thing we didn't mention is that, under the Section 42 program, we are obligated by statute to be with these projects for 15 years, if not longer. So the program is designed to encourage long-term ownership and management of projects. And we at Roers Companies have that same mission and intend to be with these projects in the long term. Second would be the use of public and private investment to provide housing. By using the Section 42 program, we're able to leverage federal, state, and private resources to create public housing. And then lastly, the economic impact, which is really the community investment that we're able to make in each of these communities. Both of these projects will be north of $50 million in total development costs, which, most of which will directly impact the community, as well as providing job growth, not only in the long term for folks working on-site, but also the construction jobs, as well as supporting the growing industries in both Casa Grande and Maricopa. I know I went through that kind of quick, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Just real quick, my question would be that it appears, really, our partnership, meaning the counties, is a tax relief. Is that on the real property or the property tax of the site?
The property tax of the site.
Property tax on the site, correct? So, that's really that, that's, we're not putting money out, we're not, we're just not going to collect money, is what it amounts to. But it gives you guys an opportunity to make some. I tell you, affordable housing is huge problem in this area. And I'm open to any and all solutions that are out there. So, I kind of like the innovative thinking on this one, to be able to find some affordable housing for our folks in this county.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
No, I'm for affordable slash attainable housing, because we do not have that, as you stated. We bring in a lot of jobs that we always say, oh, look, they're 90 and $100,000 jobs, or they're $120,000 jobs. But there's a lot of people that don't make that. And where do they live? Because it just drives the prices up for all the other homes. And I think that it's really important that we do something for the people to support, all those people that are making $120,000 or more. So, I, I'm not really a big fan of not having the property taxes, just because I can hear some people already. But, but I think this is an important project to do.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd simply agree with you and supervise and clure.
Thank you. Okay, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 12 as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, it all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Here comes our scientist.
But not a mad scientist.
But not mad scientist.
Just sometime, just sometime. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mike Sumblum, Director of Pinell County Air Quality. Today I have before you a resolution, I do have a brief presentation, of a resolution committing to doing some future rulemakings for our PM10 non-attainment area. And I will just give you a slide, a few slides here to give you some brief background. As you may know, the moderate non-attainment area for PM10 was designated in July of 2012. We did not meet that standard in the defined timeframe. So EPA re-designated that area to what's called Sirius, so it's a bump up in level this past July in 2020. That triggers a due date of a state implementation plan, which is a corrective plan for the area by January 22 of 2022. The Maricopa Association of Governments is the lead planning agency for air quality in Pinell County. So they're responsible for managing that SIP development process. Air quality, the county is involved in that process. We've developed what we call an emission inventory that identifies where those sources are and how much they contribute. We've evaluated control measures and formal commitments that we'll talk about here shortly. And then our ultimate obligation is to implement those measures on the ground to make improvements in air quality in the future, so. So I mentioned that the compliance date, there's a compliance date associated with that Sirius designation. And that happens to be December 31 of 2022. We currently have exceedances that will not allow us to meet that date. Not to mention that's only, that's only a year away, a year and a half away. A lot of reasons for that, mostly timing of when the previous plan was turned in and when EPA acted on the current Sirius area. But meeting that date's not practical. But the Clean Act does have a provision that allows, with justification, an extension up to five years, which gives us more time to comply. One of the drawbacks to that extension is that not only do you have to go out and look for the measures that were obligated for a Sirius area, which is called best available control measures or BACAM, you've got to go out and look at what's called most stringent. And what we've identified in this process today is both those, the best available control measures and the most stringent measures. A consultant did that for MAG and we reviewed that information. So today's resolution is committing to adopt those rules in the future. We're not taking any rule, you know, rulemaking today. So the control measure obligation, or the control measures that were evaluated, MAG hired a consultant, a very well-known consultant, that went around and looked at other areas that had a similar non-attainment designation for PM10 and looked at what those measures were that they used to get into compliance or that the EPA approved for compliance. That's a big, long list, I think you saw it in that appendix. We went through those measures. We have a very tight justification for not accepting those measures. We worked with MAG to try to identify what, you know, what that was. In essence, if they're beneficial to reducing particular matter in the area and they're not technically infeasible, or they're not overly expensive, we are kind of obligated to look at them. So this commitment, as I said, it hits to do rulemaking in the future, pass rules that I'll come back to the board with in the future that are similar to what, similar in stringency as to what we put in here. These measures that they had identified from other jurisdictions may have been very specific to that jurisdiction in their language and their application, and ours might look somewhat different. All of these rules that I'm bringing to you or that we're proposing here apply to open areas, vacant lots, construction activity, and unpaved roads. And you can see that in that list of measures. I did get comments from two different entities on this, that they asked me to provide the board this morning. That's from the Home Builders Association and the Arizona General Contractors Association. I'll give those to the clerk.
Spencer told me he was going to comment.
I talked to Spencer. Their comments, their comments were essentially, putting them in a nutshell, is we know we have to do this. We're not opposed to this resolution, but we're concerned about what the rules would be. And we've committed to work with them to make sure those rules are feasible and they're rules that we can both live with and we can get EPA to approve. That's the goal here, so.
That's great.
With that, I did include a map, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mike?
Good.
Okay, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 13 as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, it all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Eyes have it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. What is he doing? Where's he at?
I think they all stepped out for lunch.
Oh, here, sneaking back the other door.
They're out looking for you.
Good afternoon, board, Kent Valkmer, Pinell County Attorney. Looks like we're off. Oh, it's on, okay. Light's not on, so usually that tells me that we're live. I thought maybe you guys took a break because I stepped out, I apologize.
Another technical difficulty.
Gentlemen, I'm here on agenda item 14. My office is requesting to hire somebody at above midpoint. According to county policy 4.20, if an elected official wishes to hire any employee at above the midpoint, we have to set a discussion agenda item before the board. I'm going to explain to you in just a minute why I believe that you should authorize the, my office to make the offer to this particular candidate. But I'd like to just take maybe two minutes and, I guess frankly, criticize the policy of 4.2. And I would encourage you to consider amending it. And I will tell you, you'll have that opportunity as soon as I step off to DIAS, because I believe Ms. Mary Ellen Shepherd is going to be presenting something to the board to potentially address agenda, or excuse me, policy 4.20. The issue with this policy, quite frankly, is right now, our system is designed to hire kind of early-entry people, people that are go-getters, that are young in their career. It is not designed to hire those sort of exceptional people. That was great for our county as we continued to grow and as we continue to develop. But we're, we've arrived, in my opinion. Look at what we're competing for, look at these economic development plans, look at the different things we're doing. We need to start targeting high-end and top-tier talent. We can't settle for newbies. We can't settle for people that have two or four or five years' experience on some of the stuff that we're handling. Now, that's just not my office, but that's all of the electeds. I believe you've heard from our assessor come in and say, look, I can't even get the people in that can create the APNs and there's this backlog. We've heard it from kind of all the electeds. So I'm urging you to consider amending or changing this policy. I understand there needs to be some limitations. I understand that you don't want us to just hire everybody at the absolute max and really skew the system. But right now, the halfway point is the absolute kind of max we can go without coming to you. The other issue with this is, so we do our interview, we identify who we believe should be our successful candidate. We then have to negotiate a salary with them. And then, once we come to that sort of agreement, we have to say, now you need to hold at least another month because I'm going to have to get an agenda item on and I have to actually get the board's approval to say that we can hire you. So, again, when you're talking with top-tier talent, that's, that's, these are people we're competing with. It's not somebody that's just floating around, I'm not snagging them. You know, and I'll move specifically on to this particular employee or hopefully soon-to-be employee. This is for a senior paralegal position in our major crimes division. Under the county's rules, a senior paralegal has to have at least five years' experience, which is pretty easy to meet. But you also have to have a degree, whether it's a bachelor's degree or an associate's in the paralegal certification. So what happens is we have really narrowed the pool of potential applicants. We had a number of private sector applicants that came in and their demands were in excess of $70,000. As you'll see here, I think we're asking for just over $58,000 to hire this applicant. So what happens is, because of what we pay, private sector is a highly qualified, private sector person's not really practical, the only thing I can do is arguably steal somebody from another county. We looked internally, there were none of our candidates that met both of those criteria, both time and their education component. So we had essentially looked to steal from other counties. And when I'm looking to steal from another county and I'm looking at trying to take somebody that has 19 years of experience, like this particular candidate, I can't ask them to take a pay cut. I can make our office look beautiful, I can do everything I can to accommodate and to attract people, but ultimately telling people that you're going to have to take a pay cut to come work for us is, it's just not a viable method to go forward. So, this particular candidate, again, has 19 years of experience, has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with behavioral science emphasis, has an associate's degree specifically in paralegal studies, does have their paralegal certificate, has previously worked at a major metropolitan county attorney's office handling capital and homicide cases. And that's what we need her to do in this particular case. She's going to come in and handle homicide cases. Again, I'm asking for it to be just above the midpoint. I think the midpoint is roughly $55,000 and this is just over $58,000. It's certainly not at the three-quarters standpoint. And again, I'm not asking that she's getting a huge raise, I'm just asking her not to take a pay cut. But in order for me to make that offer, I have to come to this board and convince you that it's appropriate. So what I'm really here for primarily is to ask this court, this, excuse me, this board's authority and permission to formally make the offer that I'm proposing to my potential candidate. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Board's pleasure.
Chair, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 14 as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, thank you. Eyes have it. Thank you. Getting down. Here she comes.
Chairman Miller, members of the board, Mary Ellen Shepherd, Deputy County Manager. And if it's appropriate, may I just say, in introducing this next agenda item, what the county attorney said. And that'll get you to lunch quicker.
There you go.
So we are asking your consideration for revisions to propose to Pinal County Policy 4.20 Wage and Salary Administration. As you may recall, back on May 19th, we spoke to you about the state of HR. And at that time, we spoke to you about the need to be more agile in our compensation practices while continuing to have controlled discretion in order that we might ensure pay equity and compliance with legally compliant pay practices. We believe that these revisions get us there. As Mr. Volkmer spoke to, the major changes remove the requirement that elected officials have to bring to this board requests to pay someone above the midpoint. The issue is one of timeliness, as Mr. Volkmer spoke to, as well as even minimal dollar amounts would need to come to this board. Sections have been rewritten and reorganized to help clarify the need to comply with existing procedures requiring written justifications for salaries above the minimum. We've added additional controls with respect to promotions that require county manager concurrence if increases exceed 5% for non-supervisory promotions and 10% for supervisory or highly specialized. We've opened opportunities for transfers to occur. When they're done, open competitive presently in county policy, no pay increase can be given. The language is confusing on this issue. So we clarified that with a transfer, which is basically a movement from a position in one pay grade to a position in another department or elected office of the same pay grade, it doesn't allow for an increase. However, if the duties are substantially changed, it opens the door to allow that to be considered. So that, in essence, are the changes to be more agile, flexible, but with controlled discretion so you can be assured that there are reviews in place so that our pay practices are equitable and legally compliant. Any questions, gentlemen?
Any questions, Mary Ellen?
Good.
Everybody good?
I like, I like what you've done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So like, as you said, what she said and what he said?
Okay. Do I get a motion out at all?
I move we approve item 15.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Now moves us to 16.
Chairman Miller, members of the board, Mary Ellen Shepherd, Deputy County Manager. As you are aware, elected offices and departments requested new classifications as a part of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget process. Funding has been allocated to support the creation of these new positions. The role of HR is to determine the most appropriate classification as given the duties described along with the market grade. And this process is outlined in Pinal County Policy 4.28. Details are attached for each of these new classifications listed. At the board's pleasure, I am prepared to speak briefly to each of them, or we have the elected office and department directors hear if more detailed descriptions or information is desired. So with that, I'll ask you, did you want me to briefly go over them? Again, they're detailed and the process to do market grades have been attached.
Everybody good? Anybody have any questions or comments?
No, let's move forward.
Sounds good to me. I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 16 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it.
Thank you. And if I may, thank all of the elected offices and departments that worked with us on this project. And I'd like to acknowledge Leah Rodriguez for in the HR department for all of her work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ellen.
Bring this to item number 17, which has a public hearing component. Who's going to present? Lester? Steve?
Okay. Thank you, board members. And today's first code amendment is a amendment to our zoning ordinance addressing the height of accessory structures in our rural zoning districts. So this amendment, as case PZC 00321, actually addresses six different zoning categories, all acre and above in terms of the minimum required lot size. What it would do, and can you scroll down a couple pages? Back up. One more? Thank you. What it would do would be to allow accessory structures, so these would be garages, sheds, primarily RV store, RV parking garages was the driver of the amendment, that when they're located within the main building setbacks of a lot, they can go up to 25 feet in height. So right now, we have a zoning regulations in these zoning categories that if you have an accessory structure, it can only be 20 feet in height, but it can go a little bit closer to the property line, so four feet, basically. So these accessory structures would still be permitted, the 20-foot tall ones, and they could get as close as four feet. But if you put the building in the main building setbacks of whatever zone that you're located in, in the rural zones, they could go up to 25 feet in height. So as a code amendment, we went through our normal public outreach. We had a work session with the board a couple months, no, about a month ago. Talked to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They unanimously recommended approval of the amendment. We had our neighborhood meeting back in June, and there was no attendees. We sent the code out to our colleagues in our towns and cities and neighboring jurisdictions, and as of today, there are no responses, no comments. And from our outreach that we do with website, and there were no direct mailers with this because this code amendment would affect all properties in Pinal County that have these zoning categories, we have received no comments in favor or in opposition. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have, and thank you.
Any questions? Supervisor Goodman?
Thank you. Steve, part of the, part of some of the complaints and things of that nature have been from the building arena itself, from the builders. Has we received, with this change, have we received any response to that? Obviously, you said they haven't, but have we sent anything out to them that we're changing this?
Well, during the initial formation of this code amendment, there was some dialogue between local area contractors who were desirous of having the elevated height and then having a garage door opener with a pitched roof. So after, I want to say maybe six or seven meetings with folks to talk about other options to get additional building height, this turned out to be a happy compromise. So I think a lot of that dialogue that you're referring to happened during the formation of this.
Mr. Chair, if I might. So in other words, the complaining I'm getting is going to go away.
Well, I don't think you'll ever get away from the complaining, but the...
On this.
On this issue?
On this.
On this issue, yes, it should.
That's really, because it's not a whole lot to ask whenever you look at the height and everything of these with the new motorhomes that are coming out and the RVs that are coming out. And then, anyway, I just, I'm glad we finally got here.
Yes, yes. This will allow the...
Long time doing.
The pitched roof with the garage door opener, and then the garage can fully open and the RV can slide in.
Okay. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Till the next model comes out.
Very true.
Any other questions or comments, Steve? Okay. Want to open up the public hearing? Anybody from the public want to discuss this item? Item number 17. Seeing none. Public hearing is closed. For his pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number PZ-C-003-21, an ordinance approving the case PZ-C-003-21. Zoning Regulations text amendment of the title that would actually raise the building, buildable area from 20 to 25 feet. The Planning Commission voted 7 to all, recommended approval of this case.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. This is rolling right along now. This is number 18, which also has a public hearing component to it. And there's Steve, and so we're going to pass another ordinance here. Go ahead.
We are. While the PowerPoint is being spooled up for this one, this is a continuation of our discussion on recreational medical and medical marijuana in Pinal County. Started this primarily, well, singularly because of the passage of Prop. 207 earlier in the year that allowed recreational use of marijuana in our county and across the state of Arizona. There we go. So in order to address that, there was a, and some other things relating to the medical marijuana section in our zoning ordinance, there was some dialogue that we needed to update our code, take a look at recreational, take a look at the code as a whole, compare and contrast that to our colleagues in our towns and cities, and began that dialogue with both the board, the Planning Commission, and various members of the industry. So as a result of that, we are here today, which is a zoning regulations change regarding marijuana land uses. And this would affect our current zoning ordinance, and it would affect all counties in, or all properties in Pinal County and all facilities in Pinal County. And it was county-initiated. And before I get going, I'd like to give a special thanks to Lynda West and Alan Quist for their Herculean effort on this. Putting the zoning ordinance of this magnitude into what's called legislative format is a truly Herculean effort. So there were a number of topic areas that we discussed a couple times during the discussions on this. One had basically the location, where are these facilities allowed to be located? And before I get too far down the road, this would deal with dispensaries and growth facilities simultaneously. Different requirements for each, but these are some of the topic areas that we had. Also, we were looking at the timeframe that the SUP that these facilities get issued and how, what's the duration and what are some of the conditions associated with that? How far this facility should be away from each other? The provision of drive-through service? Size of dispensary? Off-site cultivation permitted locations? And then some other things dealing with timeframes and stipulations therein. So to give a recap, we did a commission initiation. We had a work session in April, a commission work session in May, public hearing in June, board of supervisors. Another follow-up, we did our typical neighborhood outreach. We had a neighborhood meeting to which there were no attendees. And we advertised and noticed the case in provision with our zoning ordinance. As to this point, the towns and cities have not responded with any comments in favor and for or against. We did have some outreach from a, an attorney representing members of the industry and a variety of phone calls, just basically questions, not really lodging any opposition or approval of the proposed amendments. So we worked with the Planning and Zoning Commission and with the board of supervisors to whittle many of those issues down to a series of pivot points. Now, the expansion of the eligible zones, just to recap, we used to have where you could only go in two zoning categories. Now you can go in four, basically the commercial zones and the industrial zones, with an SUP that is looked at by the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately approved by the board of supervisors. We took a look at the time periods for applicability of that SUP. So there was a lot of concern from members of the industry that two years was way too short, required a lot of investment into a facility, establishing business networks. And by the time that would be accomplished, they would have to come back and go through the same process that they went through to get the initial SUP adopted. Expansion of the notification area went from 1,000 feet to 1,500 feet based on some community input that we had during the processing of SUPs for these types of facilities. And then also the removal of a floor area limitation. So you used to be able to only have a 2,000-square-foot facility on the dispensary side. Growth facilities have always had no limitation. They've been subject to the site's capabilities of that. And the current proposal has no limit on dispensaries and no limit on growth facilities. Now, the Planning Commission discussion, generally, we talked, well, we had a very long discussion about many of those pivot points. And out of that, there were two primary discussion points with the Planning Commission, the applicability and distance to other dispensaries, which I'll touch on in a little bit more. So the applicability section was that there was a section that was added to the version that went to them, which is in the version you have in front of you today, that in red there, "Any valid previously approved special use permit for a marijuana off-site cultivation location on the date of this ordinance is extended to 10 years starting from June 30, 2021." Now, what that does is that if you have a permit for an SUP for a dispensary or a growth facility, it's now valid like it would be now. So it's got a 10-year applicability rather than the two, provided that this passes, basically. Staff's okay with that. The commission's okay with that. It makes sense. And that's as a result of the dispensary, or, sorry, the growth facility that was approved out in San Manuel just a couple of months ago. The next one, there is a little bit more discussion and led to this verbiage being added in red that says, and this is in relationship to the 10-mile distance requirement. So currently, if you're within 10 miles of another dispensary, no matter where that dispensary's at, you won't get your, you can't submit an application. Now, the downside with that is that if you have an SUP, you get a dispensary, and then another dispensary shows up outside of our jurisdiction, you're no longer eligible for an SUP the next time it comes around. So the commission had some pretty pointed thoughts on that. So they added the text you see in red, but at the same time, we're very concerned about maintaining the adequate distance between the two. So we have with, all of the section A5B, with, within unincorporated areas of the county, no less than 10 miles from county jurisdictional boundaries, which is an interesting turn of events. So the commission basically recommended a course of action, and this is, I'm going to use these graphics coming up here in the slides to kind of illustrate what that would actually mean. So this is Santan Valley, and this, the epicenter of this is the southeast corner of Enquintera. Basically, every piece of property within that yellow circle there would not be eligible for a marijuana facility of any type. So basically, that's what your boundary would be. Using Maricopa as an example, this is the southern boundary of Maricopa. The nearest facility could, would basically only be allowed in the I-8 corridor. Now, this was done after a very detailed cross-section of our towns and cities within Pinal County. Took some... and cities within Pinal County, took some samples of other counties in, in our state, looked at some of the more urban communities, Tempe, Phoenix, and the like. And primarily, those other towns and cities, especially in the urban areas, specified very specific geographical locations for where they wanted the facilities to show up. Tempe relegated to commercial zones that are only in certain areas. Casa Grande, for example, there's basically, I'd say about a quarter mile square in their entire city where facilities could, would, could be located. Now, our current philosophy is a little different. If you have zoning and it's, meets some other characteristics, you can put it in any part of our county. But then, if adopted as-is, the version you have in front of you right now, this would be the net effect. So, we were going to, as staff, going to ask for some additional direction on how we wanted to move forward on this, that in keeping with the 10-mile rule, do we want to get this restrictive or look at a different direction where we keep it the way it was? So there's a couple questions there that we'll talk a little bit more in a second. So just to recap, we looked at the location, expanding the zones, up the timeframe from two to five. And the, oh, and on the grow facilities, it went from, it went up to 10 years. So that, that, which makes a lot of sense. And just some initial commentary that grow facilities and dispensaries are completely different facilities. They have different operational characteristics, they have different needs. They really only share the name marijuana in their, in their title. So, that, that seems to make a lot of sense with a lot of, what the commission did on the, the grow side. Separation from other facilities, the size, delivery is now allowed, drive-through is now allowed, outdoor seating is not. And then anything else in terms of the applicability, the notification area again, and then some of the floor area limitations of storage. So, some, with all that, sorry if I whipped through a lot of that, there was a lot to cover. But, as part of our discussions on that 10-mile, and I'll put some of those slides back up to kind of talk about, and, and hope there's some good dialogue, and if I'm available for questions on what different iterations that would mean. If you want to adopt as-is, as the commission recommended, use the motion that you have. If you want to do some changes, we have, use the motion with the following amendments, and we have some sample language depending on some general consensus from the board. So, down to one issue, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or help navigate this particular issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Did you put that map back up on the, the way it's written right now? Those are the restrictive areas. Those are just two locations that you identified that would be restrictive, and that they couldn't put anything in that, those areas.
Correct. That would be, I use them as an example.
Okay.
Good.
Here's Maricopa as an example, too.
Any other questions of Steve? This has a public comment, or, a public hearing component. So I'm going to open the public hearing at this point, and please comment if you'd like. Seeing none. Public hearing is closed.
I, I do have a question, Mr.
Okay.
Mr. Abraham, I have a question for you. So, going back to the Maricopa, either one, but Maricopa map, just go. So that's the south boundary of the town that you're epicentering on there and then drawing a circle.
Correct.
So, you couldn't have a marijuana facility of any type in that area. Now, the city could, though, correct?
Correct.
Because it's not, okay. Just, just checking. Okay. And same with
Same with the other locations.
But then Santan is in the city, so.
But, but, but Queen Creek was in that circle, wasn't it?
Queen Creek, well, yeah, Queen Creek, yeah.
They already have one there now, but
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Yes. In fact, there's two dispensaries in that circle outside of our jurisdiction right now.
Got it.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions, comment? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2021-PZ-C-001-21 as presented.
Okay. Have a second?
I would second, and just, and just to mention that we can always be more restrictive to start and less restrictive as we go. So, I would approve this as written.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Do I have
A third?
Wow. I'm stumbling. Everybody, everybody in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Okay. Brutal day. Brings us to item number 19, which is an exec session. So do I have a motion to go into exec session?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. We're going into exec session.
Hold on, wait, I want to go back.
And we are, where are we at on this thing here?
22.
22? 22. Discussion, approval, disapproval of an agreement resolving FLSA over time. Mary Ellen, did you want to just give us a little brief?
Chairman Miller, members of the board, Mary Ellen Shepherd, Deputy County Manager, we're seeking your approval to allow us to provide employees with agreements in order to resolve FLSA overtime and time management issues that we've identified. And basically, what these are is employees due to alternative schedules had not had their overtime properly recorded, and we would like to address that and rectify that for these employee groups.
Okay. Thank you. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 22 as presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For the record, I want to make a note that I did not vote on that pursuant to 11-222 ARAs.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 23, approval, disapproval of filling a vacant elections director position. Randy?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, executive team, I'm Randy Tracy, interim Human Resources Director. If you'll recall, back on June 16th, we came before you and gave you some options on how a selection process for the elections director may look. And today, we're following up to just see what the pleasure of the board is in terms of how do you want to proceed with that process? Whether it fall under the board or fall under the county manager, it would determine on how I modify that, that process.
Okay. Any questions of Randy? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recruitment process to fill the vacant elections director position, and keep that under the direction of the county manager.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's the business of the day. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.